Thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our school board meeting of September twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. I guess we'll have the call to order. Patty?
Liz Barrett.
Here.
Pip Blues.
Here.
Lisa Rappaport.
Here.
Ann Walker.
Yeah.
Margot Peabody.
Here.
Nancy Clayberg.
Here.
Oh, Ben Epps.
Here.
Brian French.
Here.
Carrie Nolte. Danielle Miles.
Here.
Nathan Delaney.
Nathan had a soccer game that got delayed till seven P. M., so he's not able to be with us tonight. It was supposed to start at four. And it got delayed, so he's in, he's at Bedford High School playing soccer. Okay, so we'll miss him tonight. Okay, shall we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for our nation under ad indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'm gonna turn it over to Zach and he kinda has a sad announcement for us tonight.
So, I think, you know, most of the school community who are part of Parent Square know this, at five-thirty this afternoon, I put out the announcement that we had a staff member today who had a major medical event at Portent High School and then ultimately passed away as a result of that, of that event. The Richard Parker was a staff member, food service worker at the high school and father of food service manager at the high school, Michelle Parker. Richard had joined us, not this January, but the previous January, when we were really, really stuck for food service during this period of time. Had come on board, and I think initially Michelle was telling me that when he initially came on board, he said, I only wanna work two hours. It was like, and I don't wanna have any contact with kids. And by the end of his period of time, he was doing five and a half hours a day. He was here all five days a week. And he was out in front and, and kids was kind of part of his calling card. So, you know, so he, and he was within the, the food service workers at the high school. They all referred to him, they didn't, most of them didn't call him Richard, they called him Dad. And so, I went to talk to Steve Canosi a little bit about, about Richard, he said, you know, he was always quick with his zinger when you're in line. Steve was just talking about going up not that long ago and he's, and with a pizza, pizza, a piece of pizza and Richard was like, wow, second piece already today, huh? So I just, I really wanna thank a whole bunch of people connected with today's events. What happened started at nine o'clock this morning in the kitchen. And so we had a bunch of people on the school level who responded to that initially. School nurse Maria Costa, health service careers teacher and who's also an EMT, Tom Bruno. And then SRO Lynn Thomas were amongst the first people there. And of course, the whole, you know, the high school leadership team worked extremely effectively throughout the course of this. Portent Fire Department, wanna thank Portent Fire Department for their efforts, getting there quickly, doing the best they could in a, in a difficult situation. I wanna thank the, the counseling staff. They came, a lot of different staff was, was as Ward was starting to trickle out because we were, you know, this wasn't in front of a lot of people. This was happening in between service lunch, it was after breakfast and before lunch. But Ward slowly starts to trickle out the best, even while you're trying to contain it for a little while. And staff was quick to be like, what, what do you need? Can, you know, do you need me to jump in line? Can I help out? What can I do? The counseling staff came down to help clean up, you know, once we were done with the lunch service. But I really also wanna thank our, our food service crew at the high school was amazing today. Melissa Carr, Susan Carroll, Patricia Cracuzio, and then Deb Rizzo, who was our food service manager overall, was at Little Harbor and then came right over to initially help get Michelle to the hospital and then help out with the rest of the crew. When we were there and we were offering to be like, what do you need us to do? You know, they politely basically turned down our help offer because we would be in the way. And you know, and they kept saying over and over again, we need to get this done for Michelle and we're gonna be here today and we're gonna get this done. And and so they each had to take their little breaks to go out, be composed and and make sure that kids had food to eat today and, and that it was done well and effectively and they, they did just that. And it was a great, amazing reminder of the devotion that people who work in the school district have for the school district and the community as a whole. There's a lot of deeply caring folks who work for you. And and today was a whole bunch of those folks showing, you know, what they're, what they're all about in the midst of a really difficult situation. So, you know, our thoughts and prayers go out to the, to the, to the family. And and if we could take a, you know, a quick moment of silence for Richard, I appreciate it. Thank you. It's hard on the heels of that to then talk about anything else, right? That's, that can be really challenging. But I, I did wanna make sure we had talked about this. Rick and I had talked about this, oh, you know, over a week ago, about making sure you had the opportunity to be introduced to our new director of people's support services, Rick Matty, who I've talked to you about. And, you know, Rick comes to us from S A U twenty-nine in Keene. We have served in the similar role and before that in Conval. And I think I told you that during the search process, our, our team was really excited about, you know, kind of Rick's experience, his kind of calm demeanor and expertise. And so we're really lucky in an environment where it's really hard. There's not a lot of people who want to do this role. It's a really hard role to do. You know, I live in a household with a special education administrator and I grew up with a father who's a special education administrator. And I know just what challenging job it is. We're really lucky to have Rick. So I asked Rick to come to just say hello, quickly introduce himself and, and make sure you could put a face to the name. So if you wanna.
My name's Rick Matty.
Rick, can you stand in front of the microphone or sit in front of the microphone? We're being recorded.
Happy to do so. My name's Rick Matty. I'm really happy to be here and I'm humbled that I was selected by the hiring committee and it's been about three months so far and it's been a really pleasurable experience. Like Superintendent McGlaughlin said, there's a tremendous amount of caring people that work in this school district. And I just wanted to echo that and I'm thrilled to be here. So thank you so much.
Welcome, Rick. Good luck. I'm sure you'll be meeting with us from time to time, so we look forward to having you.
Absolutely.
Budget season.
Absolutely. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Are we recording?
We are.
It said recording in process.
Yep.
Okay, great.
That's just the switch.
Yeah.
Oh, it's green.
That's right. And then I just have one other recognition, which is a, which is a repeat, but it bears repeating. We, so we sent the press release out last week. And just when we were, we were notified that Dundero was being recognized as one of the three national blue ribbon schools in New Hampshire this year. And, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a real tribute to all the work that has been being done at Dundero. That's hard work from staff, you know, from the, from the leadership, from students, families who are, who are supporting the school. So we're super proud of that. And then, you know, the nice side note to that is one of the other two in the state feeds into our high school and it was Ry Elementary. So, so it's a really, you know, wonderful sign for the, for the health of the district overall, the quality of the education that, that folks are receiving in our schools. There is an award ceremony in Washington, D. C. in November and we expect to send a few folks down to that, to that award ceremony and we'll see if, if some of our friends from Ry join us for that. And, and I, and I just wanna congratulate all those, all those different people who are part of the Dundero school community for all their hard work on behalf of the city of Portsmouth. So, thanks.
Okay, and I just wanna welcome Susan Morrow to our meeting. Susan, thank you for coming. She's our city attorney and she's gonna be here with us, helping us facilitate our meeting. So, thank you. And she already noticed that the red light wasn't on, which is
Potentially a great save.
Yeah, being recorded. Okay, next on, oh, does anyone else have an announcement? Nope. Okay, we will move on to acceptance of minutes, the September twelfth regular minutes. No to both. Ann, second, Brian, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, unanimously passed. Okay, we will move on to public comment. I guess there is no one present for public comment. Do we have anyone on the Zoom? Matt, okay, thank you. Thank you, Matt, for being here too. Matt's here all the time helping us with the audio visual stuff. So thank you, Matt. Okay, next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Today is just a combination of items, notifications around emails, field trips. And so not, not a lot of additional updates beyond those, beyond those particular items for me for today.
Okay. Next, we have items of information. You talked about the email summary overnight field trips. Did you wanna?
I'm sorry, yeah. And those, I would just say that I, we have had some conversation. I know some members have reached out around connected to, we did have the four emails connected to mobile phone use. I think we've had some dialogue that we would, you know, be able to return at our next meeting and the intent would be to have some additional information about what actually are the procedures that are occurring at, at each of the schools in relation to mobile phone use. And then be able to have some additional conversation about that. So, so that's the plan for ten-ten.
For ten-ten. Okay. Thank you. Next, we go to the financial memo and financial report.
So in your packet was the June thirtieth year ending report. I, I did two things. I provided for you in the memo some callouts of things that really we talked about most of the year. And then on the financial, to the far right, I lo, I left some, they may be cryptic, but I tried to make them notes that were meaningful enough so that you'd be able to tie back to some of our previous conversations that explained why we have those variances. Obviously vacancies drove significant vacancy, significant budgetary savings across the board, not only in salaries, but in the related taxes and New Hampshire retirement costs that, that are in the budget to, to go with them. Substitutes, when I first ran this, substitutes looked worse than they do now because ultimately I was able to go back and identify substitutes for substitutes who were substituting for teachers who were on long-term leaves and not being paid. So ultimately the sub wasn't a sub, the money belonged to the salary line. So I was able to reallocate some of that. It made it look a little bit better. And then I guess maybe the single greatest call out in here is out of district tuitions, which we saw dramatically over budget. And that's not just the tuitions, with related transportation to move kids to out of district placements. And then in case it, if it stood out for you, we encumbered some dollars in working with the city to cover what is ultimately a shortfall in our capital plan for the tennis court project that's ongoing. Once we finally received the bids, the dollars were way beyond what had been budgeted. So we were able to secure a couple hundred thousand dollars out of the bottom line savings for that purpose. But I would, I would try to answer any questions you might have about that.
Any questions for Nathan?
Yes, Margot. Thank you. I love the new notes in the margin. Really helpful for those of us that think that way. To, to your knowledge, have we ever done a look at the financials of owning our own bands for sports and after school? You know, particularly the state has the new electric vehicle incentive kickback, I know, because we talked about sustainability, but is that something that we'd kick around?
Absolutely. So this is one of those moments when you wonder just where the microphone is in your phone or your, or your office.
Right, right.
Board member brings it up on camera. So I would tell you, it's been an ongoing conversation for the last year.
Okay.
Obviously, not just because there are seven kids on the golf team and why are they taking a forty-foot huge bus, which we then can't get anyway because we don't have my drivers or I'm coming up with examples, the, the cycling team, the three kids that wanna go to the C T E statewide group. I forget, I'm trying to think of the CTSOs, but anyway, they wanna go to Concord for one of these meetings. And so we've been talking about that. The more we do extended learning opportunities and have internships, the, the Lister Academy does a bunch of those things, C T E does a bunch. Today, I was at a conference on finance and operations and business leadership in Concord, going back tomorrow. And one of the breakout sessions that I sat through talked just specifically about some of the insurance concerns and the liability issues and the legal ramifications of trying to secure alternative vehicles. And I've secured Trooper First Class Hildreth, the, the individual at Troop G of the, of the New Hampshire State Police who's responsible for school bus transportation in the state. He'll be at my New Hampshire ASBO meeting of business administrators from across the state in October on the tenth, specifically to talk about things that are not big yellow buses or little yellow buses or buses in general, but are alternative. The law's very clear that, that we, we can't use alternatives like that for home to school, the home daily route, route transportation. And so setting that aside, the law is less clear about our ability to use alternative vehicles for extracurriculars, field trips, after school things, et cetera. And we're not the only ones across the state. Everybody's looking. And I specifically challenged them to come to talk about non-C D L options. So I can't get, if I can get a commercially licensed driver, I can have them become a bus driver. It's, I can't get C D Ls. And so I want the coach, the advisor, the teacher, the, I want the adult that's going to be able to drive. So we're very close to that. Our, our C T E center director, Ms. Richings, has already secured permission from the state to use some of the federal funds in her Carl Perkins grant that supports C T E to secure a vehicle like that.
Yeah.
She may have already secured it. I haven't seen the paperwork, have I? But I, you know, I've tried really hard to rush the conversation about how do we do this legally to be compliant. So across the state, people, especially in the North Country, some of the outlying, more rural areas, they struggle. It's a distance to get to the things that we want kids to be able to participate in. So we're very close, I think. And then obviously, I should remind you that as a part of our C I P process, which I'll talk about next, as part of our C I P, not only do we talk about capital projects, but we participate in the city's rolling stock program. So we've got twenty-one or two vehicles that are listed in the rolling stock inventory that are on an inventory turn over every ten or twelve years, depending on the vehicle. Kenny Lynch's pickup trucks that are plowing in the lots and serve the maintenance crews as they, the maintenance guys throughout the course of the school year and the summer. But also the, the huge John Deere tractor that's working down at the athletic complex and some of our big ride-on mowers and some trailers and the, the vans that we've already got at Lister Academy. There are a number there and that's a mechanism, if you will, as we start to contemplate doing that, where we could not only secure some additional vehicles, but we could work them into the city's inventory turn so that we could start building them, not just for the, hey, for the next three years, we've got this vehicle, but for the longer term, how do we meet the needs of moving kids around? So that's coming.
Uh, I'm so happy to hear that. Thank you.
That was a very long answer.
I appreciate.
Yes, Liz.
I guess, Nate, we have talked about this. I feel like when we, I first came on, so maybe two years ago, about the city's rolling stock. And I guess I'm just wondering, you know, where that fell by the wayside. And I, I guess my understanding is, and I, I just wanna be clear that that's what you're saying too, is that you don't need a C D L to drive a, you know, the coaches and whatnot. They don't need that to drive these vehicles. So I, just, so I guess two questions.
The hope is to have, the hope is to be able to secure, to be able to purchase and own vehicles that can be driven for school purchase, a purpose that in moving students that don't need a commercial driver's license.
Yeah. And so I guess my concern though is that, sorry, Zach, my concern though is that this came up two years ago and I'm just, I don't want this to come up in two years again, where we're sort of just, you know, doing the same, saying the same thing over again. So I mean, is there, is this, you're obviously going to this conference, you're gonna learn more. And then once that, what's the next step? Budget season, then we make some decisions of whether we wanna make some purchases or what we have, like we know what we have for inventory at budget season. Like what is the next step here?
So, Zach, can I just say there's another component, though, that I think we're still, and it goes back to the insurance piece.
Yeah.
So it's what, if we're, it's one thing to have the vehicles, another to be in a situation where the people who are gonna ask to drive those vehicles are covered themselves so that we don't have to put them in a vehicle and say, which in some cases, right now, we're gonna have someone transport, their insurance is initially gonna get drained before anything comes to us in certain situations. So there's this whole other component, which is around making sure our folks are basically protected from their own personal insurance. And so that's, that's a piece. And then we could also be getting into some conversations about, about collective bargaining agreements and, and who's expected to drive when. And so I think those are, those are two other elements that make it.
Wouldn't these, sorry, but wouldn't these come under the, this having a stipend? Like if you're stipending, you're the athletic coach, you're working under your stipend, right? And so that's a separate position from your teaching position. And then, you know, you have a contract, simple, like, you know, colleges do this all the time. So I don't know that we're reinventing the wheel here. I think I'm just concerned that we talked about this two years ago and now we're talking about it again and, and nothing's happened.
I guess I wanna, I wanna respond for more to that. I've been talking about this for a decade.
Yeah.
It's not as easy as, as somebody suggests it's a great idea.
Yeah.
I think we've got right now an opportunity with a different leader in the state police who's interpreting these laws to be able to do this because I, I haven't been able to gain clearance to do what the rec department in each community that I've worked in has already been doing. They got a van, Aunt Sue is driving it and they got fifty.
How are they getting clearance?
Different laws. They can't, we're a pub, we're a school department and the rules are different.
For a school department versus a smaller district?
No, for a school, for schools. For a school, for a public school.
Okay.
Private schools.
You said.
Private schools get away with different rules, but we have rules that have limited us from being able to do that. I, I've have, I've been in the, I've been in the position to want to do it in Exeter. In Hampton K eight, there was a limp, a less, a less driving, you know, motivation for it because we just didn't have as many kids doing as many activities at the K eight grades, but, but statewide, it's been an ongoing conversation. And there've been a couple of instances where districts have been, maybe I could name them off the top, but to not call them out because they were doing it before doing it was really kosher. There were a couple of districts that had pulled this off by, by working these vehicles through the system and, and making them essentially look like they were owned by the town as opposed to the school department so that they could use them without claiming it. But
The rec department using it.
Like the rec department, like, but, because literally we haven't been allowed with the folks that are in position to give us that authority, you have to take a vehicle up. It's got to meet the specs. It's got to, in some cases, have a stop arm on it, have the, the stop sign that pops up, have the light rack on the roof. There have been things that have been created as obstacles to this. And, and generally, leading up to COVID, we were able to secure busing in most communities to solve, to solve most of our needs. But so it's a great conversation. It's a great suggestion, but it, it's not that two years ago, this was a layup. We just chose to put it on the back burner and not think about it. It's, it's a conversation that I've had with colleagues around the state every year for over a decade. Just haven't been able to get to the right people being in the right position to sign off on it. And then, like so many great ideas, the logistics will be.
Do you need a C D L to write a short, just move my last question? Do we need a C D L to write a short, guys?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. And let's move on to Hope.
So can I dare to ask a follow-up question to that before I ask my other question? Because I don't want this conversation to fall on forever. But so Zach, regarding insurance, because there, there are a lot of small groups at the high school that take their own cars or might ride with a director or something like that. Is, is, what's the situation right now with insurance for those types of situations?
How to take the lead?
Yeah, so I, and that was the conversation today in this. Today was less about what's the vehicle legally you can use and it's more about you should have a policy. And I looked at ours and it, like many of our policies, is dated and, and, and we probably are, we're probably, it doesn't feel to me like we're violating our policy, but our policy doesn't speak to a whole lot of things that we now do.
We're not covering ourselves.
This walked right through the, you know, sometimes you have a staff member who drives in a vehicle we own or in a vehicle they own. Sometimes you have a parent who drives their own. Do we ever let a parent drive somebody else's child? On occasion, we have a student who drives. We probably across the state all agree, we never let a student drive another student unless maybe a sibling. But they shouldn't be, right? And so this stuff should be spelled out in policy and it isn't. And then they, they were recommending today, and this is our insurance carrier, they were recommending today, not only should you verify if they're using their vehicle that we have license, registration, proof of inspection, but also if they are driving, we have information either provided or sworn to their driving record and that you have a process in place so that you can deny somewhere driving when others might be allowed. That's when you start to get into a, a union conversation like Superintendent was speaking to. So one of, I walked away with a couple of things. One, I said, this was a great lead up to having everybody at this meeting in October because I think we're gonna be able to make some ground. But the second was, holy smokes. They're recommending and they're right, this is a policy conversation that most of us should be having because we should clarify a great, to a greater detail. Still leaving ourselves flexibility because too many shall, shall do or shall not really limit you and the flexibility you might need in some circumstances, but we need to do a backup job on looking at that policy and clarifying it because the Primex will cover a significant chunk of what we do. But Primex was there speaking today and saying, we really need you to have done your due diligence and to be setting us all up for the best possible position should we face some legal challenge to some loss or some liability or something.
Okay, so I have a, my proposed policy.
Primex didn't have one off top, but I was looking at school boards to see if the school board association has something that, and then what's Primex's feel on that? So.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So I'll ask you, Nathan, because my other question. And if you don't have an answer, I'm happy to look at this in October. But I was curious about community campus and if any expenses to us would fall under the maintenance line of one eighty-eight, are they being folded in there? Just getting an update of like where we are in that project and our partnership with the city. Do we expect cost for renovations to still fall in the same way that we had anticipated? Or do we expect costs to come further on our ends for things and just kinda get a, not necessarily a detailed, long-winded, but
I'll do my best.
Again, again, if it's not appropriate, we can move it.
No, I think before, as we launch into C I P, it's great to take a minute and just tell you that the Lister Academy project is, is, it's going really well. It's really been designed. We've been working on contract. Contracts were signed with the end of last week. The contractor Bonapage and Stone out of Laconia will be on site and mobilized starting, I believe it's the sixteenth of October, that Monday. We are still on target to complete this sometime. We, we've labeled substantially complete date of June fifteenth so that we can time that with closing of school, packing up and moving of stuff out of Lister Academy, which would leave the Lister staff the opportunity to be in and out of the space through the summer as they contemplate norms and routines and practices for that space for their program in the fall. So all of that seems to be moving forward. The funding mechanism right now is three point three million dollars that was provided by the city's C I P. We had a million, million five that was provided initially that was going to be for the window project on Dero, which we'll be doing with S R funds this coming summer. The city added one point eight to that, so kitted that together, that we have a guaranteed maximum price right now for the product itself, and just under three million. Then the design and all the other overhead costs that go with it, it'll be within budget.
Okay.
And we expect sometime this fall, as we break ground and we get through the dirtiest of the demolition interior, to create an opportunity for maybe the board to take a look at the site and and that would give you a sense, a chance to maybe look at the, the floor plans and have a greater sense of what's coming.
We, we've talked about the, what we'd like to do is, is have a couple of meetings where potentially we, we, we meet at community campus and we'd have an initial tour. We'd have a couple of staged opportunities for you to see like, here's where we're at right now. Here's what it looks like. There's, you know, give you an update you can see.
And, and so if those numbers shift, would those fall and be reflected in one ninety or one?
Also, the other part of that is you asked about operating, which is not, it's not just the renovation cost, it's what happens when we get there.
Right.
So the Lister Academy program has its own budget and it carries, has carried its heat and lights and basic utilities. And so, and custodial services. And so that will continue and we right now are estimating that it's roughly the efficiency of the new space and the more modern facility and programs and, and not programs, but mechanicals. Hopefully keep us pretty close on the operating budget so that it's not costing anything more. And that, but that will start next year as we stop spending money to support the old school, suburban school and move over, then our budget at Lister will start being paid, paid to the city as a tenant because it's the city that'll hold those bills because of the, the rest of the structure.
Okay, so it'll be reflected in there. Great, thank you.
Yes, Liz.
I just thought I'd ask about the out of district tuition. Obviously, this is something that we've gone over, that it fluctuates and, but it, it is a significant Um, obviously this is something that we've gone over that it fluctuates and, but it, it is a significant amount. And I guess I just wonder, you know, with the Director of People's Support Services coming on, if um, if there could ever be a reevaluation of children. Um, and what I mean by that, I guess, you know, some children year after year, they go to the same out of district placement. And it doesn't seem like there's this opportunity to bring them back into the school. And I, I guess I can't speak to any child's IEP or five oh four. Um, and obviously residential placements and, and um, out of district special ed placements are significant, significant costs. Um, but I mean, it's, it's almost like the cost of a, you know, going to college for four years. And so I guess I'm wondering if there could be some reevaluation. And I know it's, it's based on every kid's IEP, but with a new Director of People's Support Services, if we can kind of relook at where these kids are and come budget season, you know, maybe have an understanding if this, if we could work on this cost a little bit.
Yeah, I think, oh, first of all, with, I think one of the things that we were just talking about with, with Rick the other day was when we go through the, the uh, special education process, we're always trying to find, you know, the, the acronym is LRE, least restrictive environment for students to obtain their education. Uh, and so you want to find that place where you're giving as much support as you can without giving too much support so that you have as close to, I mean, you give just enough and not, and not too much more. One of the things that stands out about Fort Smith and the elementary schools, and I think Patty and I were talking about Rick's experience, just about every single kid in the elementary school is in the um, regular education environment, which is really unusual.
Okay.
Really unusual, uh, and, and really unusual in a great way that we try to support kids in those environments and we don't do a lot of pullout. It's very different than a lot of places. And so I think as a, as a district, the whole mindset is really first and foremost around how do we have all of our students? Even with, with, I would say a um, a, a, a deeper set of disabilities than what I'm used to seeing included in the nor, normal education classroom. How do we, how do we have as many of our students here on site? Um, in environments where they're with their peers in their neighborhood schools? So, um, so I think that's the, that is the starting point for all those conversations. And then, uh, and I think teams are always starting from that perspective when they're sitting down. It's like, what, do, do we have the ability to bring the student back in? Uh, but do we have the ability to bring the student back in and then provide the supports in the local school that actually going to get them in education? Right? So, um, so I think as Rick goes through stuff and I think as teams go through annual uh, looks at kids' IEPs, there's always this conversation, which is, are we in a position to come back to the, come back to the local school?
Yeah, I think it's interesting that you say that, but I also think that there could be, I, I, and I think I've seen it in the schools. I think there's, there's also concern that if you don't address it young enough and you throw the supports at them young enough, you know, maybe pulling them out of school, that there's going to be this greater cost in middle school and high school when they have to go to other placements. So I don't know if that's something that, you know, Rick can take a look at as far as budget goes. Like maybe if some of these kids had supports early on, then they would, that they would be in a better position later. So, um, but yeah, I, I would, it would be great to have some more um, updates on this budget season.
And I think the only thing that's challenging in a budget conversation about this is what we have to be really careful about is, are we talking, do we ultimately end up talking about?
Specifics.
Spec, even if we're not naming the students, do we end up in a conversation where we're talking about where basically if someone puts in a little bit of time, they're able to identify individual students. Uh, and, um, and that can be really problematic at, at, you know, in this type of setting. So, you know, I think we generally want to follow those guidelines and I think it's important to push Rick around, around those concepts. So um, around how do we make those decisions? And, and once we make a decision to send a student out, um, do, is, is it a thoughtful conversation about the possibility of bringing, having a student come back in? Or is it just kind of like, once you're out, you're out? Um, what's the history? How do we make those decisions? I think broadly at a thirty thousand foot level, I think those are really important conversations for you to have as a board. Um, but I think we've got to be really careful about getting into individual, individual students um, and around their disabilities.
Hope and Danielle.
Um, I'm just curious about line item one fifty-nine, the ESL budget. Um, it's not very much, but it raises a question for me of, I know at one point we were contracting for translation services in the district, so I'm wondering, is that covered in this cost? What actually is this cost and is it really um, at this point in our district? Is it enough to cover the supports of ESL as that's growing in our district?
So. So big change comes hard. And the financial report that I'm looking at doesn't make that big a change in terms of providing greater clarity. Um, baby steps, I guess. I, what I'm trying, what I'll try to roll out to you next month for the financial gets rid of this plan, it's not in this document, but in the one we've seen the last few years, uh, this, this comparison against a projection or against a plan to consider the spending pattern. Instead, I'm going to try to show you just a traditional budget report that says this is what we budgeted, this is what we have spent and what we've committed and this is what's left. Um, it'll be an interesting effort, but to walk through with the board, but I, ESL, this is just stuff. So you're looking at a budget that says, oh, we've got like eighteen hundred bucks or whatever it is, but there are multiple teachers across the district who are buried in this teacher salaries. And ESL is funded by the Title III grant, which is another federal, a federal program that provides a lot of the material that they might need. So right now, I, I mean, I would look at the educators to, you know, I think we are fairly well-funded in that regard.
Okay.
And if, and if you saw a fully loaded ESL department and saw all the staff, that number looks significantly higher as you consider the number of students being served.
Well, I knew it didn't include staff.
Well, that's it.
Wow, we're getting a bargain.
The public, the public can peek in on these things in the pack and so I worry that somebody wouldn't catch, but I, um.
What about the translation piece now? What are we doing about?
So I was going to say, the other challenge is that the ESL teachers sit inside buildings and the regular ed teaching budget, the, the teaching materials uh, throughout, you know, in each of the buildings frequently pick up some of the tools that they need for ESL. They don't generally pick up the Braille textbook for identified student in special ed or some of the other equipment that's very specialized. But in ESL, a lot of those resources just get picked up in the course of uh, teaching supply purchases generally.
Mm-hmm.
Um, translation is another one that I think hides in the budget somewhere. I don't mean hides intentionally, but it falls in under special ed because we were having an IEP meeting.
Yep.
We needed the translation to help with this process through and they end up eating the cost somewhere in one of their accounts. And so we could do, we could do better trying to earmark that and make sure it sits. And if it did, I think five or six, seven, eight thousand dollars in translation over the course of a year would probably swamp this line, but it's finding a home somewhere else.
Okay.
And I would say just in, uh, I can't give you the, I can't give you specific numbers, but I do know in talking with principals that that is still an on-call service. We have the ability when needed if a parent's at a meeting to um, to reach out and have over the phone, ready to go, translation services for parents uh, and for documents. So the extent to which that's being utilized, I, I'm not ready to give you that information tonight, but I can tell you principals are aware of that service and use it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, oh Danielle.
Um, I just wanted to um, possibly contribute to the conversation about the special ed piece. Um, just for context, maybe not everybody in this room, but people looking is that IEPs can never be written based on budget or on what's currently available. And that if we really tossed up creating the programs that these kids are finding the right placement outside, they aren't necessarily possible in. And so the ability to create that program would require the space. It would require the small, smaller classes, it would require the equipment, it would require the staff. And staff and space is already so tight. Um, so just thinking about those aspects. Um, I think of course we want all of our kids in district and be able to meet their needs and feel really good about that. Um, but for a lot of these kids, I, I just know we're having a similar conversation on a smaller scale about how our kids at Lister re-enter the high school. And it's not just as easy as like, oh, just go back. It requires a transition type of, of program. Like it's, it is this in-between place of how do we get these kids in both places? And how do we get the services there? Well, they don't have all those need, you know, all, all the staff and the space and the things that we can't dual replicate it. So I think I, I, that budget number for me also was like, wait, what did we spend? Uh, but when you really think about what that means and what those kids are getting and then trying to think in your mind, how do we replicate that? I almost think the, the money balance would tip. There is a reason.
Thank you, Danielle, that was uh, good information.
I was just going to go off of that. I, I think when we look at it, we're always looking for, are there clusters of students who are in those out of district placements who have similar needs? So then we can go out and, and build something, we have enough of an economy of scale for us to build our own in-house program that would make sense. And um, because in some cases, you know, we don't have certain types of specialists. It wouldn't make sense to hire an individual full-time specialist for a certain type of disability or a certain issue if only have one or two students who are accessing that, that specialist. So it becomes more cost-effective for us to send the student offsite in order to meet the needs in their right, in their IEP. But if we have clusters of students who have the same thing, then that's when we start looking at, do we have the ability to bring some of those students back in-house? Can we build some of that stuff and sustain it? So.
And I, I can't, I can't guarantee the number, but.
And space.
One of the things that, and I monitor that in the course of the budget process. And I think the budget that we're working in right now was built on fifteen or sixteen out of district placements across the entire district. And there were twelve placements, uh, thirteen, something like that. So it's, there, there's a couple of kids at this site and a couple of kids at that, but the rest of them are all spread out at their own because the unique needs of the cases dictate that. And so those clusters don't readily exist right now, at least the way the budget was put together when we contemplated those needs and those placements originally, so.
Okay, uh, Lisa, Pip, Liz.
This is just for a future file, but I would be curious when we're talking about special ed around budget season. To know if there are clusters of like lower level needs that we are serving really well, I'd be interested in just getting a little bit of a snapshot of that. Because I do think we have some great programs that are sort of situated in some of the different schools that do address the needs of kids with similar needs.
Sure true.
But with all the shortage of Paris and case managers, I would just be really curious to know how that is uh, still working.
And, and part of that story will be non-special ed support services as well.
Right.
Where there's some thoughtful work being done or where students who might continue to struggle to a point where they reach special education eligibility or being caught earlier by reading intervention, math intervention, other types of interventions that are happening where we don't wait for you to get to the point of special education. We're already engaging you with other stuff. And that's, I think that's a really good, rich conversation for the board to have um, in terms of thinking about those services um, across the district, but also the distribution of those services across different buildings too, and to what extent we're doing that in equal way, so.
Pip, thank you, Lisa, Pip.
Um, I just wanted to ask where we are on the, um, on the hiring of Paris. I know there's been a, there's been a shortage of Paris and I'm wondering where that stands at the moment.
I can look at my, I'm going to pull up my thing right now and check on the most up-to-date. I feel like we're down to eight, I think is where we, is where we were. Yeah, so I think that's like, so give or take within the last, I mean, that might be up or down one or two in the last um, couple of days, but we're right around eight is I think is where we were.
Okay.
Yep. Better than, yeah. And they've, actually I'll give Rick a lot of credit despite coming in uh, really, really new, has pursued some different approaches and, and has, we've been hiring people at a quicker rate over the last month and a half than we kind of had previously. So I think that's, I mean, so good for him. Um, and, um, and hopefully we continue that trend.
Okay. I have uh, two quick questions. Is uh, the conversations you mentioned Danielle, um, are Rick, is Rick part of those conversations about Lister Academy students coming back to the high school? Is that within his purview? Okay. And then um, Kathleen used to represent us in chins and delinquency um, cases. And oftentimes those cases end up in, or result in a child in residential placement or some type of placement. Sometimes the school ends up picking up the cost, I don't know if the school picks up the cost for any of these, but in my experience, having previously worked at DCYF, um, you know, that was the case. And so I guess I'm wondering who's representing the district now in chins and delinquency hearings?
I think we're still working through kind of case by case, how that's going to go. Um, uh, I think it, it'll depend. I think it'll depend on the particular case, it's not going to be Kathleen every time. So depending on the situation, it could be somebody from in-house legal, it could be just someone on the administrative side. So it's going to be, it's going to be, that, that'll be the, one of the biggest changes, I think. There was a, there's a really nice convenience about having Kathleen on staff because she could always go to those things. And I think that's one of the things that we're going to have to work through on a case by case, depending on the nature of that.
Yeah, and I don't know that we, I don't know that other districts always send somebody to court. Um, but I guess I, I, I do think that if, if, if we can get word or at least have somebody that's staying on top of those cases, then that's an opportunity to sort of sort, wrap the kid with services and potentially, you know, prevent, you know, a further need if uh, necessary. So, thank you.
Any other questions for Nathan and Zach about the um, financial report? Okay, Zach and Nathan, let's move on to the CIP.
So.
Information?
So we talked about this CIP update last time and the CIP program, just so that you're reminded, it's a, it's a six-year look ahead, it's a six-year projection of capital costs uh, that the city considers across all departments. Uh, some of these dollars are raised as local taxation in a given year, but a significant chunk of them are larger projects that are bonded with borrowing over the course of many years. And the city, if you watch the council discussion about this, um, uh, throughout this next budget cycle, the city balances to try to make sure that the total debt service that's being expended on an annual basis stays, um, stays within a given parameter so that it can be smooth as a budget item rather than volatile. So uh, they, they decide the timeliness of things, one, based upon the severity of the need or of the opportunity that it might create deficiencies and savings operationally. And they consider how it fits inside the greater debt schedule. Uh, and, um, and so as you look at some of these things, when the process is finished, they may or may not land in the same timeframe because there are other priorities. Uh, of late, we've been talking about a new police station. That would be a significant capital cost, it would have some upfront costs and then they would have some debt service over a period of years of, of borrowing, bonding. Um, and so the school department uh, submits each year a capital request to this program. There are three elements uh, in, in what we've drafted for this year. One is the ongoing district-wide capital improvements, uh, which right now is dedicated to paving and roofing projects. We had fallen into uh, fallen into a plan, if you will, or a trend that had a million dollars being allocated every third year. Mr. Lynch and I talked about this, but I've only been here four years, so I'm not sure how long the trend happened. And maybe it's just wishful thinking at this point, but it's in the request and you can see it. Um, and so that next third year arrives in fiscal twenty-seven. And in twenty-seven, we would talk about dollars being spent on upgrades at the athletic complex. Uh, there'll be dollars spent on um, uh, some additional security upgrades, uh, some interior work. One of the things that is district-wide, and it's also very specific, is that we have done renovations at the elementary schools. And the middle school is still relatively new, but your high school is chasing up over twenty years. And as this plan starts to become real, meaning that the out years, the last few years in the plan start to become immin, imminent years, the high school's reaching a point where it's going to need some upgrade inside, especially going to need the camp. I think Kenny's number right now is somewhere north of ten million dollars to replace, re, rework ductwork and air handing units across the building to do interior um, uh, coat compliance work and upgrade, and then some of it's an aesthetic uplift as well. So with that in mind, because that really, the majority of that's just outside this window of time, uh, you can see roofing and paving are important. We did Don Darrow this summer, there's roofing being done, maybe even over the course of this year. Um, all of the pavement at the high school will be done over the next three to four years in pieces, did I say roofing? All the paving, we'll dig up the paving, that'll be done over the next three to four years um, in phases and much of the roofing uh, at the high school will be addressed. Uh, I think the most imminent right now, the most pressing is uh, over the CTE center. Uh, but if I tell you about the, the last element in here, it is that the CTE center, which is located in the building in the high school, it's on, the CTE centers across the state are on a twenty, twenty to twenty-five year rotation.
I remember that.
They're not funded by the Department of Ed, those renovations are actually funded by the state's capital budget, the same budget that does roofs and bridges and roads and, and such throughout the state. Uh, and it is somewhere between a fifty and a seventy-five percent um, state contribution, depending on the scale, the scope and the budget pressures at the time, I think in the state. And so I've put a placeholder in that sixth year out because it's possible that the CTE center jumps on their list in biennium thirty, thirty-one of the state. And so I put seven, uh, three million dollars there as our match of a thirty percent against a ten million dollar project. So thirty mi, uh, three million for us, ten, excuse me, ten million total, three million from local, seven million from the state. But at the same time, it would make sense when we have contractors on site, there's a contract, there's a general contract and we're doing a big project. Some of the mechanical work that needs to go at the high school should be addressed at the same time because the patient will be wide open and the surgeon will be on site, so. Uh, so that, so. Those are two big projects. Want me to stop and take questions about those before I walk to the others? Does that?
I think Ian has a question.
Comment that when we renovated the high school initially, it was at the time that CTE was also.
Was also.
And we were able to bridge that together and it worked out really well.
Kenny has Kenny has led me on that, that it it and it does make sense. It's good to find efficiencies that way.
Yeah, sorry, he called on me. Is that okay, Madam Chair? Um, I'm curious, forgive me, I don't remember what board meeting it was, but we had talked about. Um, I think it was during the whole SRO conversation as well. Security measures of upgrades uh also to the high school. And so I didn't see those in this proposal. So I'm wondering like, where do we? Stand on those and um will they be part of a proposal in consideration when we do upgrades at the high school or sooner?
Well, so there's, there's.
Did I miss something?
So Kenny Kenny does a nice job. So if you look at the second page of the, not the memo, but the second. Landscape sheet, it's a detailed page of the first element, which is school facilities, capital improvements. If you look at fiscal twenty seven, you'll see.
Yeah.
Some more dollars for roofing and paving this, the athletic complex, but there's also some security dollars there. And we expect that there could actually be dollars as well in twenty um in fiscal thirty. And Kenny's got a couple of dollars uh responsible for or promised to security upgrades. Remaining in the fiscal twenty-one pool of dollars that some of those capital projects are envisioned and then. Things get in the way, timing, other projects. Um, and so there's still some upgrades that can be made.
Okay.
The 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 other, the third, uh, which is in the middle, but the third element is elementary school work. Um, you know, that we've done significant work at Don Darrow and Little Harbor. We've done the air handling upgrades that were intended uh and the mechanicals at New Franklin. But New Franklin still needs some some dating updates, you know, some cosmetic. But in the process of that, there's also some walls that need to be, their panels that need to become walls. And there are some um. Some code challenges where the accessibility issues in the building that really should be addressed. And one of the things we think about in Franklin is that the front, the facade, the front entrance for security purposes, we should create that airlock. Um, when we do, there'll be some reconfiguring of the of the main office area. There'll be some loss of space because of that. And so we we'd like to be able to consider adding some space, especially for storage. Because of what we might lose in that process. So. We have five million dollar placeholder. Uh, in that last cycle, we had to split that into two pieces because of other challenges in the death schedule. Right now, there's three million dollars uh in fiscal twenty-six. And I bumped up another half a million dollars, made it, I turned two into two point five million in fiscal twenty-nine because. As we talk about this and think about this, costs are rising. Um. Uh, but that would, that right now is earmarked to support work at New Franklin to try to catch up with the work. As I, as I've read through the reports, we've led with New Franklin work and we did some energy efficiency work there. And then we moved on to the other two elementary schools because New Franklin was at the time the most recently renovated space. Today, it it falls now to the, it's the last renovated, if you will, of the elementary schools. Uh, and so we still need to get back to that building. So that's where that is in the schedule. So this is a. This is a draft document that we wanted to show you. Certainly appreciate feedback and suggestions. It has to get to the city for October sixth.
Yeah, super helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions, Liz?
Um, I guess I was wondering, so you talk about the CTE, the high school. Um, you know, I saw some online postings looking for sewing machines and and donations from the community for some of this um. Physical equipment. And I think that's creative to ask for. Community donations in some of these settings. Maybe that's something that we can utilize more somehow, but I. I was also wondering about the middle school because when I was talking to our new shop teacher, I was talking about how I took shop class. And we had uh saws and um and um uh some machines I'm looking for. Anyways, we had machines and she mentioned that coming from where she came from. That um she was really surprised that a district like Portsmouth did not have some of the equipment. Um, the other districts had to be able to do these, learn these skills and teach these skills. Um, and some of the equipment that I used back when I was in shop class in middle school. So I'm wondering if there's any sort of trickle down or any sort of. Anything that could come from the high school and combo with CTE. And then I guess a second question of. Um, you know, machines like that, like, how are those accounted for? Are they considered? Like fixtures or like, uh, you know, like if you're gonna like, like windows or they considered like, you know, needing a piece of paper in the classroom?
Yeah, I I guess to that, let me answer that first and tell you that a renovation project generally would include. Major equipment, obviously welding, you know, in a welding program, you have welding stations. Um, in the culinary arts, you have a full-on commercial kitchen, you know, so uh in with regard to something like um. Uh, woodshop, I mean, if um, you know, if there are, if there are um. There are carpentry or what do you call them? Sounding foolish in my own head, but what is, what's the?
Carpenter's carpenter stuff.
Table saws and the like, that's.
Yeah.
Looking for a catchall. That stuff could reason, would reasonably be in a project. Obviously, you can. You can order separately some of that stuff as equipment, but normally a a full-scale project like the one we'd be talking about. Would include update replacement maybe of equipment in any of the technology programs that are running at the CTE.
So do you want to talk specifically about, because I think part of the question maybe since we're in CIP.
Yeah.
Is what types of, when? The does equipment get into CIP specifically? What types of projects specifically are CIP projects versus versus? Other places where we might find?
So I think this, the single biggest rule of thumb that I could offer to you and and. This, there's a great di- there's a great document that spells this out from the planning board and the council level coming out of the city finance office. Fifty thousand or more for a project. And a and a, I forget what the years is, but a measurable lifespan. So uh, a computer, even a bunch of computers would not fall to CIP. I think classically, um, we do have a component on the city side that supports some of our wifi. Because wifi is an infrastructure piece that is um invested in and maintained over time, like capital things are replaced on an inventory turn schedule. So. Uh, and so if we were really, if we were talking about, hey, I want to buy a couple of pieces of equipment for woodshop. Um, I wouldn't think those particular pieces by themselves would end up in the CIP. That would be an operational expense. Kenny has asked. When you looked at that financial report, that line, there was a line where the two hundred and ten thousand was earmarked for the tennis courts. It's cost center one ninety and it's CIP. That's not the CIP and I need to relabel it moving forward so it makes sense. But for years, I guess, facilities had a projects. Kind of maintenance projects, small scale capital. I'm replacing the carpeting in here. It's twenty-five grand. I've got to repaint that stretch of classrooms. It's gonna cost me fifty grand or thirty grand. Those are things that don't necessarily buy themselves land on the CIP list. They could as a part of one of these million-dollar catch-all programs, and that's where he's been catching them for the last few years. Somewhere back long, I can only imagine it was a budget cut kind of crisis. They got rid of the dollars that had been in that projects account. Kenny has asked, and I'm talking back and forth, and we'll talk about that in the budget cycle. Could we start to slowly walk some dollars back into that so that some of these? Facility maintenance projects, which could include new equipment purchases like this. But also again, might include flooring or what have you. Some of those things could have a home without them having to find their way through the CIP process. But that also has to be vetted. With the city side to make sure that they want projects of that scope and magnitude to to not be in their CIP. So.
Okay, hope. Any other, oh, Pip, open Pip, sorry.
Do we um, in the spirit of working with community partners, do we ever seek out partnerships? Cause I know like with CTE, our um motors were all donated and with private sector. Many companies often have education funds that they're looking to plug into communities um in in different ways. So I'm just wondering, is that something that? I don't know if that Kenny or who, whomever, but are we doing or can we do a better job in our district? I know that we're a district that doesn't like to ask for things a lot, but I think there's a difference in asking and partnering.
So I think I'm talking about CTE and I I don't want to leave anybody else off the list because I'm sure there are other examples, but I know that the CTE program really. Um, takes a leadership role in that kind of partnership outreach. Um, and I. And I don't, I'm not sure I can comment on any sitting here right now in the last three or four years, especially COVID was a damper on everything, but. I know over twenty years, the CTE programs I've worked with. Their, the automotive equipment has come from the car dealers of the of the region. Um, you know, no reason for you to train a student in working on a lift. It isn't the same kind of lift they're gonna use when they come to work for me. So here I'll buy you a lift. And so those kinds of partnerships, I know Courtney Richings. Talks about in courts routinely and she's in the, she's in the right market. She's at the right meetings. She participates in the, in the merchant. The chamber and programs like that, uh, so that she's in places where she can be available to them and have those conversations. I think there's always room for us to continue to grow those kinds of partnerships throughout the district, not just at CTE, but I think. That's maybe the best example of the work that's being done in that regard now.
And and some of that is Courtney's really, really hard work.
Yeah.
Uh, around those issues. And some of that is just to what you're saying. Some of that's just CTEs and there's natural bridges. Anyways, because you're constantly in conversations with with partners about what do you need in the workforce and what can we do to help you? And then you get into those. That lift example is a great, great example.
I recognize we do it in CTE. I guess I'm thinking about how can we mirror that in other components of a a district? So if we're looking at a CIP that's gonna cover new equipment and a woodworking shop, can we come along and partner? It just seems like Courtney does that so well and to have someone that understands how to do that so well, we could um learn from that.
I think that the examples that I've seen in the past always feel like it's not a donation, it's an investment. And so to the extent that there are programs within the high school, maybe even lower grades, but where there are programs where. Partners in the community might feel like they're investing in future opportunities. I think we should find those and 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 seek seek out that opportunity when it's there.
I did, yeah. Um, uh, I know that that um. You've mentioned the air handling systems being upgraded in the elementary schools, but we've also talked about AC and I don't think those two are the same thing, right? Or at least we haven't put AC in some of our space, some of our schools. Or I know part of the high school. So where is that falling? It's not, it was not a request from the CIP, as I understand.
So I will tell you that there were a number of citizens' requests that spoke to air conditioning. Uh, the the citizens' request portion of the CIP program being open uh to that input during a very hot week to start school. It was, and I, and I, I I hope, I don't wanna, I don't mean any disrespect if I say. It cooled off the following Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and there was another week of opportunity for more requests, but they had, they trickled off and stopped at that point. And I. Uh, so I guess I I would say this, the high school. The high school uh space that really needs to be addressed is really best addressed. If I'm talking about cost efficiency and effectiveness and timing, it gets best addressed when CTE rips into that place in fiscal thirty. It's right upstairs over the preschool portion and other elements of the CTE, which will be in play and in the midst of that renovation. And so dealing with the ductwork and and. Part of the reason why it didn't happen in that area, as I understand it, is because the headspace above those classrooms is really tight. And so. Duck work is a challenge. There's have to be some external work that may better, it may be better served by smaller system splits room by room or, you know. Combinations of rooms as opposed to the the behemoth chiller that's up there working on so many other classrooms. Kenny has some notes about that, but the the best time to tackle that. Uh, and 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 make that mess and clean it up and find efficiency is when we've mobilized the force to be in there otherwise. So. Right now, that is considered in that fiscal thirty. That's, that's part of the expectation. It's in both that ten million dollar project that would really be uh CTE. And then the other million dollars that's in the uh the district-wide maintenance that same year. Although. The reality is that's just the beginning of probably ten million dollars more over the next two, three or four years to upgrade mechanicals all through the high school. And so it it would happen somewhere in there that we would upgrade the mechanical and size it according to take on some of the classrooms, et cetera.
But just be clear that. Ten does not necessarily include taking care of Little Harbor.
That's right. That's high school. I'm just.
So I want to make sure that's clear. And 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 I think, and I don't want. You to take on the chin. I mean, some of these are judgments. Yeah, and well, I mean. I I think as we look at it right now, we understand the push, the citizens' requests that we got. If the debt, going back to what Nathan was saying, if the city has the same debt service policy. And we think that roughly, so that means that roughly the CIP pie is gonna stay about the same size. Um, with some inflationary adjustment, right? And then our chunk of that pie is gonna be reasonably similar. Without, I mean, it's not gonna radically shift probably in relation to all the other needs of the city. If that's the case, then it's real, the, some of the numbers we're spitballing right now, which will only increase as time goes on. Of anywhere from four to six million dollars to do those other two elementary schools. It's really hard for me to look at the other things we're talking about and say. The opportunity cost of the loss of those other things in order to provide air conditioning at those other two schools. Um, squares off. I know that is gonna be unbelievably unpopular to say, um, I get it. Uh, and sometimes it's, you know, but I just look at the other things that we're planning to do and knowing. And believing that for the most part, the amount of money, the pie that we're gonna have is is set. I I just don't know that those those other projects should be pushed aside in order to, right now, still deal with what is. And I'm not, I I'm not trying to, uh, I know it's hard. When we have days at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year where it's where it's hot. Um, and we're not as effective in terms of our instruction during that period of time. And I know it's not comfortable for folks. Um, but right now, I know I can't look at those other projects and say, push those other projects to the side. In order to provide, let's call it, split the difference and call it five million dollars. Um, that we would utilize five million dollars for that, for that specific purpose. So some of that's coming out of conversations we've been having.
So you're saying that's this year that you're not comfortable doing that, but do you have a plan to address in the future?
I I would say, well, I'm saying this, I'm saying that this is a six-year per, six-year plan out. That our pie is spoken for right now, six years out. Um, and so based on what the other things that are available to us to do. And some of the stuff that's just gonna be required maintenance, like we don't have a choice. On think, on some of what we need to do at the high school. Well, we have a choice. We can be irresponsible about the high school. Um, and we, you know, and we have a choice. We can not put aside the money we need to get the match, that huge match we could get from the state in connection with CTE. Um, and some of these other things that based on the conversations I'm having are, I'm I'm hearing are very necessary things. Um, I don't see five million dollars worth of stuff that should come off the table in order to provide those other, those other things.
Yeah, well, I think, I mean, my concern would just be that we're, we're experiencing the hottest days that we ever have on the earth.
I know.
Already. And so in six years, that's only gonna be a lot worse. And and then if. If they're not important now, what's gonna make it more important?
When is that trigger moment?
Yeah.
I understood, understood.
And I, and I also think we have the opportunity to to um. Do them at different times too. So like we have done in phases so that we're not looking at five million all at once, but.
Yep.
Um, maybe building it in slowly over time and maybe even just in parts of the schools if that's more economical, but. I I really think it is something to address.
I will say really briefly that that has been one of the conversations we've had um around. If, as we spend down some of the extra money, if we have any, if we have a chunk of extra money left at the end, which I don't think we're gonna have a big gun. But if we did, that was the, kind of the conversation was, what can we do to create cooling centers within schools? Maybe we're not doing every, every space, um, but cooling centers. And then if we're gonna do that work. If we're gonna do it, do it in a way in which that was, you could add on to that over time. And so it becomes, it become, became a a possible phase project. So.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa, Liz, Hope.
Um, I just wanna echo what Pip said because I do think in addition to just getting hotter, we've been missing instructional time. I mean, we had to close school because of the heat. And it's not getting colder. So I don't wanna overreact or prioritize the AC over other priorities which are essential to get done. But I would be curious when we get around to the budget conversation in January. I don't know if there is a Band-Aid for this, because you don't wanna sink money into something temporary if your goal then is in eight years to then have. A bigger project because that can be sort of. Wasteful, but I guess I would be curious if there are any creative solutions to bridge. In in some way that is not financially nuts and maybe makes things a little cooler for those really extreme days.
Okay, thank you, Lisa, Liz.
Um, I guess I'm just a little bit concerned with how the um, this last page presents the seven million from the state from fiscal year thirty. And so, I mean, that's not a guarantee, right? And 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 based on what this says, it's it's more of a. A match, but a potential for more. So I guess I'm wondering, there's any way to like. Pull that out and put it differently or flag it? Because I mean, to me, if I were on city council or I were putting together a CIP. I'd be, I would look at this, you know, with a, you know, probably hundreds of other documents about what we're doing in this. How big, ever big the CIP is. And I would look at this and say, oh, wow, they're getting seven million from the federal government. And we're bonding three million. So I'm a little bit concerned, I guess, that. There's this seven million projection that, because that's not guaranteed, right Nate? So.
Oh, but I, I. Oh, but I, I, no, but. So the F, the, the CIP requires that we show the, the matching dollars, the federal dollars, or in this case, the state money. And so the state, the state does a maximum of seventy-five percent. The projects, the CTE renovation that I did was at seventy-five percent, but I know that there's some politics involved, so I didn't want to assume seventy-five. But I don't think that they'll short us at fifty percent, I think. Uh, if it's fifty percent, we might push and ask them to kick us out on the schedule and wait us until the politics get better.
But I, I guess I'm concerned that it's pushed out for, like, this is CTE, we are desperate right now for, you know, medical staff, services. We don't have plumbers, you know, there's people that we need in our community that we don't have, maybe because of the cost of living, but maybe because we're not training them. And so I'm just concerned that we're not investing the money for another, what, six years?
State opportunity, and it may not be in fiscal thirty, it may not be in state by any thirty, thirty-one, it might be in thirty-two, thirty-three, depending on. The other centers that are in line in front of us, the rotation is actually based on um, a list in law of the year they were opened. They were founded or established or opened, and so we're waiting for Hudson, we're waiting for, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
And so.
So is there a way to flag it though, to be like, this is an estimate versus, I mean, I guess these are all essentially estimates.
And you notice the big black square around FY twenty-five?
Yeah.
The city puts that there on the element sheet, because that's the only one that matters. The rest of this, the rest of this is an exercise, it's a planning exercise, it's an important planning exercise, but. They're not borrowing that money now, they're not setting it aside, they're not, they're really only going to consider the bonding requirement and the, and the. The tax appropriation for things that are in fiscal twenty-five in the next budget cycle. But in order for, essentially, in order for all of these departments and all of these needs to start jockeying for position. The state, the state law directs at least a six-year cycle, and Portsmouth, like every other community I've used. Has a master plan that is a six-year window.
I guess, I guess my only thing is, there's nothing in this, this document right here that tells anybody that besides somebody like you going there and explaining it. And so I guess I'm wondering if you could insert that into the description somewhere that says the state. It says that, that, you know, they bring to support Portsmouth renovations, but split, put there specifically that the state. Matches, you know, generally fifty to seventy-five percent, and that's where that projection comes from, like, is there, can you put that in there somewhere?
Sure.
Okay, that would be my recommendation, thank you.
Okay, Hope.
Um, so I have a question for Nathan and one for Zach, so going back to the AC climate thing, and I'm not trying to. Beat the issue to death, I mean, I'm from the south, I have a hard time with this one because I went to school in the heat. And appreciate and can empathize, but I also grew up in the heat. And so I can appreciate why it's harder for our students up here when there's still kids down there that don't have AC. But are we looking at grants at a federal level um to see around? I know there's a lot of things coming out with climate change, um, are, like, is that you tracking that stuff? Or is there someone else in the district that's keeping an eye out for those type of grants that could potentially be used towards. Um, climate upgrades?
I think, I think we're all, we're all mindful of the, of the regular press. Uh, we get reckon, we get notifications from the Department of Education here at the state level. Uh, we are all reading the trade magazines coming from its national level, so we're mindful to watch for those. Not just in this case, climate change, but there've been a number like, uh, we've looked at uh, electric buses with a conversation. These things come out, and I will tell you this, frustration is that for so many of them. The, the, the grantor, the federal government largely that subsidizing or, or, or creating the conditions in which these things can. Can, uh, these opportunities can, can be driven, they, they tie it to need, and so. Um, you know, the most creative things I've seen over time is when, when relatively affluent communities partner with others. And sometimes there are grant opportunities where you can secure a piece of the pie, because you did a lot of the legwork and help so that. A community of greater need was able to secure some funding, they might not otherwise have even applied for, and we get something for that. I haven't seen any of those come down in that way, um, and I'll tell you, I've, I've read more things that I get to the end of the, you know, I get to page four and go, ah. So we're watching, but I, I mean, I tell, I say to you and to the public watching, if you become aware of something that we, you think we might have missed. Always happy to, to, to dig in and see if there's something out there, Kenny does the same, you know, in the operational side for his, for his part, so. So if, if folks find them, let us know.
And, and if those, I, I would say too, just within the field, if the, when those oper, types of opportunities would arise, everybody would be talking about it.
Yeah.
How do we get in on that? How do we do this? You know, it's like, so, you know, I think when those things are out there generally. Um, it's reasonably obvious to us that those things are occurring, and it's just a matter of, again, do we qualify?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So question for you, um. How do I ask this without putting you in a corner?
So good.
Draw a line in the sand.
Yeah.
I wonder what is your recommendation as we do see, because we are talking six or seven years, right? Um, each year, if there, there is a need for closing or half day, so what is your recommendation of like? When would we really need to revisit our policies, like, when do you feel?
I think that's a fuller, I mean, I, I, and I think that's, I, I think your question's good, I think I don't have the answer, the full answer to your question. Because it is, what are the metrics by which we make, so, so a great example, on a much smaller level, it was as. Um, in New England and Southern New England, well, around New England, when some places were make, trying to make decisions about. Are they going to close the doors for that day or not? You know, it was, I don't think there's any agreement upon what the metric was, why people were, were not making those decisions, and then. What would be the criteria, what is that criteria grounded in? Uh, and then would it only apply if you have two rooms that are there, that temperature or three rooms, or is it? What, you know, so I think, I think there's a need, there's a, there's a growing need to say, because in my head, I, I have, I know what the. My criteria is for anticip, for closure around anticipated winter weather events, right?
Right.
And now, now, the reality does not always meet what the anticipated thing is, and sometimes that's off, but I have an idea about what that would look like. Um, I can tell you when I would close school around cold events, you know, and, and what that, I can give you a, a temperature and what that would be in, or give you a wind chill. Um, but I think, I think there is an ongoing conversation about what. What is the criteria by which you would say, no, no school today, enforcement schools because of warmth?
Okay.
Um, and I, so I think that's something, it's still something I need to develop.
Okay, we need, very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone, thank you, Nathan, thank you, Zach, let's move on to um, consideration or approval of resolutions. Old business, um, Carrie is not able to be with us tonight, she had a personal family matter. And Lisa has been working on this with her, and Lisa, we appreciate you stepping up and handling this part of the agenda for us. And also thank you for being our delegate to the assembly.
Okay, so Lisa, you have the floor. Thank you. Um, you will notice it's not quite as pretty as the spreadsheet that Carrie would have made for us, but. Um, the simpler color key I went with is if it's highlighted in green. Then at least seven of the nine members of the board had the same opinion about how to proceed with the resolution. If it's in yellow, then we don't have quite that level of consensus, so. All of these resolutions are in the board packet, um, I believe they were organized in three different chunks. The first batch at the top of the screen there are continuing resolutions. Um, the School Board Association requires new resolutions to be voted on. Three years in a row before they became, become a permanent lobbying position that they're going to make part of their ongoing business. So all of the ones in that first batch at the top of the screen are ones that we discussed last year. Um, except for the first three, and then um, would need, I think. To be considered three times in a row before they would become permanent positions, so. I don't know if anyone would like to entertain a motion on just that first batch of continuing resolutions. But my recommendation there for the sake of time is if nobody has any questions or need for discussion, if we can take a motion to consider those. As a batch, and I think the motion would be something along the lines of our delegate will vote consistent with the positions that the board has going to. With at least seven people up there, and if we want to discuss, I'm open to that, but that would be my recommendation for that batch.
Do we have a motion to um approve the first seven continuing re- resolutions? Mago and Anne, just so Paula will know this. Okay, do we have any discussion on that?
I, I have some discussion, I guess I'm a little bit concerned that, I mean, we've sort of done this format and. I think it works for efficiencies purposes, but as far as like a legal purpose, I think, you know, there probably needs to be some discussion versus coming decisions before. We come to a meeting, so I'm a little bit concerned with how we've done this from a legal perspective, um, but with that said, uh. I, for the pandemic-related enrollment declines. Um, I voted no on that one, and I, I'm trying to find it in the packet because it's a little bit scrambled the way we're talking about this. I think the packet has the resolutions first, continuing resolutions, okay. School districts should be held harmless for pandemic-related reductions in enrollment that may negatively impact differential in an aid, so basically. Um, these resolutions, if we vote on them again, will then become. Um, permanent resolutions with the New Hampshire School Board Association, and so I'm a little bit concerned that this one no longer applies. Like, I think that we should be basing numbers on what our numbers are every year going forward. Um, I think this is more applicable, you know, in twenty twenty-one maybe, um, but I think as time moves on. You know, our numbers are going to be what they are, and I don't think we should be reverting back to, you know, pre-pandemic numbers. Um, so I'm a little bit concerned with continuing to support it, because then it's going to end up becoming a. An adopted resolution, whether it's a big deal or not, I don't think it's a big deal, but um, that's that, and then the other. One that I voted no on was the um, that schools comply with federal firearm laws and policies. Obviously, schools have to comply with federal fire alarm, firearm laws and policies, but federal policies are zero tolerance or, or sorry. Gun, gun-free school zones, and so I'm, I guess I, you know, I would hope that someday there could be some sort of happy medium. Where people could be trained to carry guns, um. You know, just like a police officer would on campus, because we don't have police officers there every day at the elementary school. Um, and so I, I do not support um, number seven, because I do think that there should be some. Discussion around school safety and, you know, who could protect our school that's not a police officer, so. Um, so I was the one, I think, that didn't probably go with the group on these, I said no on one and no on seven.
Okay, um, so on the first one, Liz, I can say that the intention, my understanding from the School Board Association was if some other. Event, God forbid, cycles back on us again, that they would have a lobbying condition to try to maintain the funding that is generally per pupil. So there is a formula in place, and if our budget had been set based on the enrollment during the pandemic, when many people for various reasons made decisions. To pull their kids out temporarily and then bring them back, we would have had a lot less funding as a district. So their intention in doing this was just to sort of future-proof. And in a position to be nimble, because if this doesn't pass three times now, then if there's, say, in ten years, another pandemic. Then they have to wait three years to be able to lobby on behalf of the districts that are their members.
Yeah.
That's the thinking on that one.
It almost seems like it needs to be rewritten though, the way that it's worded, so, but I get what you're saying.
So they are just by matter of policy not rewritten, they've already been voted on, so. Certainly, boards can come back as members of the association and propose a different resolution to be voted on three times if they want to do that in the future. We haven't done that as a board.
All right, I thank you for that clarification, that helps.
And then on the firearms piece, um.
What number is that one?
So that's the last one, it's number seven, I think they're numbered, yeah, um, they're numbered, it's just a little. I get dizzy trying to read all the stuff, um, but they are numbered, the firearms piece in New Hampshire, we don't actually file, follow. Federal firearms laws, and we don't necessarily enforce some of the protections that are in place under federal law. To keep guns and weapons off of our school campuses, so I think the intention there is to. At least put the School Board Association in a position to lobby and conquer for laws in the unlikely event that they get consensus in the legislature to go that way. I mean, knowing the way the politics have gone in the past, I don't know that that would be something that would get a lot of uh, interest conquered, but. It is an interest of the School Board Association to be able to advocate for that, so I think. Um, when we did these last year, we basically went with a position where the board had consensus. But did give people the opportunity to express dissenting opinions. If we have strong concerns on the board about taking a position, I can always abstain on one of them as the delegate. I didn't see a necessary.
Yeah, I guess I.
Reason to do that for any of that first batch.
Yeah, I guess I just think that, you know, with how we've done it, I think we need to sort of on record have a discussion on these things, and if anybody. Has questions, like you just clarified on number one, and wants to change their position tonight, then they could change their position, um, but you made a motion. Um, I think the appropriate discussions being had, and then we can all vote and move forward to the next one too.
Is there any more discussion on the first seven here? Okay, let's have a vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the first seven pass, Lisa?
So, what I'd like to take is the next batch is the new resolution. So these are all, to be clear, ones that are coming up for the first time this year at the meeting. So if these pass this year, they would have to pass two more times in subsequent years before they would become permanent lobbying positions.
Do you, um, sorry, Lisa, to interrupt, do you have the document where we actually put in what our positions were?
It's right there.
No, that's not, it's been edited, it doesn't have my name. Where's, yeah, where's my, oh, there we go, okay. Mine's not scrolling on my screen, sorry.
I don't know.
All right, I just wanted to.
I didn't edit it, but I am not really super good at making this.
I guess I just wanted to see what I put on there.
Yeah, um, so I guess I would have sort of the same recommend, recommendation for these, if, if there are ones where we are comfortable. Um, voting is a bathroom, we have consensus, we can certainly do that, but all of the yellow ones, anything that didn't have at least seven people with the same opinion. I just highlighted in yellow, so Carrie did have a scale that included more shades of levels of agreement. My brain doesn't quite work that way, so I just figured if we have seven people in agreement, I'll make it green, if we have less than seven, it's yellow. So anything that you see in yellow, fewer than seven people have the same opinion. So my recommendation would be to at least start the conversation with the ones that are in yellow. And I'm going to preface this by saying I took this over for Carrie during Yom Kippur, and I haven't had a chance to follow up with the School Board Association. Personally, so what I have is the same information that everybody else has in the packet, and if there's anything where people voted, you know, to. Not support, just because they didn't understand it and we want to abstain, I'm comfortable with that, but I don't have more information on these than what's in the packet.
I think we need to have a discussion though, um.
Okay, wait, 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 stop. So if you'd like to discuss it, if you can just say like, can we start with the first one, number eight, on circumventing board policy and preventing. Teacher civil suits, um, the full language of the resolution that was proposed.
I, I saw her.
Is in the packet, and if anyone has any comments on that particular one, can we start there? Because I'm just worried if we go out of order, I'll lose track, and I don't want to misrepresent what people want to actually have the vote be.
Do you want to make a motion that we, that we uh, consider number eight?
I just want to hear what people have to say about it. The, that we had six people say not support, so that is certainly a majority. We can go in that direction, but I just highlighted it in yellow because we didn't have quite as broad a consensus on that one.
Okay, Pip has her hand up. Thanks, I just have a question about, and I want to make sure I understand um, something, so. The difference, what happens if, um, I'm trying to understand the difference between support and support with alternative language, which I think I. Generally understand, but is there harm in, for those who said support? Would they still be getting what they want if we modify that to say support with alternative language or?
Asked a good question, because for number eight, several people were interested in support with alternative language, and the School Board Association did not propose. Any alternative language, so.
So that.
That means somebody from the floor could do that at the assembly, but I don't know what that language would be, and so if I'm looking at it. I don't know what that language would look like.
So it's unlikely to pass in that case, is that what?
Or somebody could, I mean, I think if somebody comes on the floor and says this is the alternative language I would like. If I don't have consensus from this group, then I'm abstaining from that vote, because I wouldn't have had an opportunity to come back to you all on the fly and do that.
That's sort of hard.
For most of them, there is alternative language, but for that one, there is not.
Okay.
So for that one, I think if you don't like that language, but you like the idea. For the sake of practicality, I think it's either take the language that we have or say no, unless we want to try it.
You're saying for number eight?
Just for number eight, just for the first one on um, circumventing board policy and preventing teacher civil suits. Because there was no proposed alternative language for that one.
Well, let's have some.
A motion to accept this and.
Yeah, motion to not support.
Yeah.
Wait, right, hold on, what's, what's the motion?
I'm making a motion to not support.
Your motion?
Yep, my motion is to follow by what we have eight through fifteen, um, because those others are in green.
We don't have consensus though, so.
You mean nine through fifteen?
Two, no, eight through fifteen. No, eight through fifteen. So on the lines, it's sixteen through twenty-three, but we have majority rules on all of those. So can we just take those and block? Thank you, Patty. Can we, can I put a motion on the floor to take those?
Made the motion. Uh, who seconded? Okay, discussion.
Uh, so are we doing nine through fifteen, to be clear?
No, eight.
Okay, well, so we don't have consensus on eight, though. That's why we were discussing it.
We, we can discuss any of them, but we have consensus on seventeen and we have majority on six. So my motion is to support what we see on the screen, voted by majority from eight to fifteen. And I have a second on the floor for that.
Okay.
We have discussion.
Yeah, I'm just
So, so I would just say one, so I would say in terms of eight, I just want to put in a plug for teachers, that HB two continues to be, I think, the way in which when Oyster River proposed this, or this idea of the chilling effect, I think it has a chilling effect on what we are teaching. Uh, and I think teachers will tell you that, that they're not sure, they're not going to take a chance based on, on the language in HB two. Um, that they're, that they are not necessarily teaching the same way they were teaching pre-HB two. Now, the extent to which that is true, I think is hard to quantify right now. I, I don't have a good way to do that. I think anything we can do to help teachers uh, not have to have that concern, I think is important. Uh, I also think that, I think the the, the uh, NHSBA Board of Directors is an important part of the structure of NHSBA. Um, I also think there are times where the values of Portsmouth are not necessarily rec, are not necessarily in a majority sitting on the Board of Directors of the organization. Uh, and so um, there are many times where I would say, I would just, I would be comfortable going with uh, a Board of Directors, but I think there, I think there will be times where those recommendations, particularly when it comes to these types of issues, they are um, it might be a different position on them, a very strong, different position on them in other parts of the states, uh, state amongst representatives who sit on this Board of Directors, and I worry about um, not properly supporting our teachers.
My note.
Yeah, I was one of the ones that voted to support this one. Um, as a teacher, I, I feel like this is a moment for our school district to define who should be setting curriculum. And in my humble opinion, it should be coming from those that are the experts in the field on what determining what should be taught. So I, I think this is a chance for us to stand behind our teachers and the value judgments they make on carrying our children forward and preparing them. And I think I, I had said alternate language because when you read policy and it starts using words like any, that can get risky. Um, that, that, it was the any that had me anxious about, about it. I, you know, if we wanted to say most, I don't, I don't know what the right word is, but there, that was why I was in support with alternate language, even though alternate language wasn't provided.
Uh, Lisa?
Liz? I was in the same camp as Margot on this one, and I fully want us to figure out a way to support our teachers around the whole issue related to this legislation. I do think it might be worth our time, if we're interested in that, to put some work in as a board to try to put our own resolution together. My sense on the ground is that NHSBA as an organization is not going to support resolutions where they don't feel like they have broad consensus in their membership. So I'm not saying we would be in the minority and wanting to back our teachers in this. There are many other districts that would, but I don't know that that is the viewpoint of every single district in the state that is represented by this organization. So I think if we would like to in the future, do something narrower that is designed specifically to protect teachers from actions related to this specific legislation, if we can find a way to narrow the scope, we might be able to get our own resolution through. I mean, that's just for future, but I think for right now, I can see how this is potentially too broad to be workable. As much as I want to protect our educators from just frivolous lawsuits and make it you know, easy for them to teach hard subjects in the classroom.
Liz?
Um, so I would propose that um, the board switch to, or I'll switch my vote from not support to support, and that everybody switch to support instead of a support with alternative language. I think it's up to the School Board Association to decipher what this proposal is. And I think the proposal, you know, based on what Zach said, you know, obviously, I, I took to heart what the School Board Association said about, you know, how this could be more broad-reaching, but I think the key language within this proposed resolution is that uh, it wouldn't circumvent already existent or extant uh, local school board review policies. So essentially, the local school board would have that jurisdiction versus the state sort of overriding that jurisdiction. I mean, that's how I read it. That would be my opinion. And so I think instead of, you know, making this confusing, I think that we should all switch, or you know, I would suggest, and I will switch my vote to support, and we make a motion to sup, and I make a motion, you know, I amend Hope's motion to make a motion to support number eight, resolution number eight, and, you know, let the delegation and everybody sort of talk through it and figure out what it is. But at the end of the day, we support this or similar language as a resolution. Um, so I, so I would make a motion to support um, resolution eight.
Do we have a second? Okay.
It's an amendment.
Men, yeah, amendment to the motion that Hope made.
Okay, I think I saw Hope first and Pip second, and Brian third, and Zach. Do you want to speak right now? Wait, go ahead.
Um, I, I hate to jump the line. Uh, but, but I will. So I think, I think two, two things, uh, two quick thoughts, and I won't go too long. One, I think in terms of this, the conversation in the state around these particular issues around um, uh, being inclusive school districts that, that I think Oyster River is amongst the places who is out in front on the vanguard on this. And we should be amongst the communities who are also out in front on these types of issues. Uh, I think um, on these types of topics, you know, I think I, I keep finding myself in situations where we're trying to catch up to Oyster River uh, in the best of ways. Uh, and I think, I think we should be trying to partner with them around these types of statewide conversations as, as much as possible. I also think, I think this is worded, I, I hear if you strike the word any, it becomes easier. Because I do think really, if you read this, this is really about, this is a local control, the way they framed it is around local control. Boards have existing policies, all boards have existing policies around the ability of citizens to go through some process to say they have a concern about a library book, about curriculum, about whatever. But, but boards have those policies, and there, and they, and there are structures in place for boards to do that. We have structures in place for that to happen. So I think all they're saying is the state should not circumvent those procedures from outside of those communities and empower um, and creates, eliminate the structures that, that local communities have created for themselves, and empower uh, one or two citizens to have, you know, a, a larger control over what's happening within people's um, school districts.
Okay, what, what was the order? Hope, Lisa, Pip?
So while I can appreciate that, Zach, I, my vote stands as a not support on the language that we have. I'm not comfortable saying that I would support something that I haven't heard. I've sat and conquered and listened to legislation one too many times and, and this type of legislation, and if I'm not there to hear what that language is and, and know that I've heard from our teachers and have come alongside someone like Oyster River, because I do agree with you. I feel like we're constantly trying to not to compare to other districts, but catch up sometimes where we need to be. But I would support Lisa's notion of having a conversation, hearing from our administrators, coming alongside Oyster River for better languaging, but I do think this is too broad, and I didn't, I'm not comfortable with whatever people come up with on the fly of the floor that day and saying that I would support that. I want to know that it's something that's going to protect our teachers and not put them at risk. And I can't, I can't say that if I don't know what the language is. So my vote would stand to not support this particular language and this particular motion.
Okay, Brian. Why don't we let Brian speak?
You know, one of the things that's a little confusing about discussing some of these yellow ones is we did say that supermajority, we would just, you know, go ahead and, and um, and if we're not feeling like we're a supermajority on these, that we wouldn't support them as a group. So I just, I'm hoping we were still respect that process because there's going to be other ones like this, too. And um, I can hear, I hear both sides, and I do, you know, I get what everybody's saying, and there's things where I might not disagree with a few things, too. But I'm just saying, if we want to stick with this process, it's going to make it easier on us. We could, I mean, I like the idea of taking this as a specific thing to go talk about and work on for later, but as it is, people, you know, it's still in the yellow. Um, sounds like it, you know, let's use our process and uh, make it a little easier for ourselves.
I think Pip had her hand up with Liz. Lisa, did you have your hand up? Okay, let's do Pip, Liz, Lisa. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
There's still a motion on the floor.
There's still a motion on the floor. I was going to say pretty much what Brian just said. I do think, you know, if somebody's changing their vote in a way that pushes us to seven people having the same opinion, then that is worth considering, but I don't think that's where we're going with this one. And I would say I am happy to have some side conversations with folks. I'm not so sure this is going to pass as written. Um, and I do think that there is a lot of consensus among some other boards, um, just based on conversations informally that I've had with people for number eight to make it a little bit less any policy and to potentially not call out parents and guardians specifically, but to try to find another way to word it so that we are trying broadly to advocate for policies that protect our educators' ability to set curriculum and teach freely. Because I think a lot of people agree with that, and I think where the politics get complex is when we try to go too far astray with who we're naming is not allowed to be part of the conversation. So that's just the political background on that one. But I do agree, I think that we have clear consensus on a lot of these, and we have much less clear consensus on several. So I think if there are any ones where people think they might change their minds so that it suddenly becomes seven votes, then that's worth a quick discussion, but we otherwise could be here till midnight debating.
Are you amending the motion?
No.
Okay.
Okay, let's, let's, I have Pip and uh, Liz, and then we'll vote on the amendment.
Okay. Um, I appreciate what you're both saying about the process. I think for me, um, I'm really, I also really appreciate that we're having this discussion, though, because as, as we've gotten into it, I've remembered that this was the one that I felt most confused by, and I think that there is value in hearing from each other rather than just going with our immediate responses when we were alone reading through these. So um, I, I can see it from both sides because I also don't want to be here all night. But um, I, after hearing from Zach and that, I'm, I'm really glad that you shared your opinion because um, that was what I was hoping to hear about this to, for some clarity. Um, I would and, and I'm taking into account what has been said also about the fact that it needs some rewording, but based on what Margot has shared, um, that which I agree with. Um, and Liz's perspective, I, I would actually support this one as well. So I will support the amendment to, actually, I think I, I, my original vote was to support with with addition or alternative language.
So would you like to amend Hope's motion to take eight out of the batch? Is that what you're saying?
Or? No, I've already done, no, no, I'm just saying that.
Motion to amend.
I'm saying that I will amend my
to amend.
But I will change my vote to support. That's what I'm saying. Um, and support Liz's.
And I'm a little confused because we keep talking about you're changing your vote with alternative language, but there's no alternative language given.
No, no.
We're not choosing to write alternative language. So I don't see how we can go forth to the body.
What Liz said was that she would change her vote to support. I'm saying I will also change my vote to support.
To support this language.
Yes, because I hear that there is none and that, that, that is
So you're supporting this language as is?
Yes.
Okay.
In the absence of
Um, do we have the option to take no position versus not supporting?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so could we, could I amend my motion to um, support to?
To vote on this one first.
All right, well, I guess, can, could Hope withdraw her motion so we could go through like we were originally and do just eight and then do the chunk? Because it's so messy that eight, well, the eight has gone into it. Should have never done it in the beginning.
All those, can you repeat the amendment?
So your amendment right now, your motion, the, the original motion on the floor was to approve the standing language, uh, eight through bottom of the green.
You stopped with the side conversations? I'm sorry, Nancy.
No.
And now the, and now the amendment is to reverse the support that's listed up there on number eight.
So, Nathan, that is not correct. We're voting on number eight now.
The, the amendment is, my amendment was to support.
One at a time.
Lisa?
So we are voting for me to take a position at the assembly that is consistent with the majority position there, which is not always to support. So I just want to be really clear.
Right.
That we're not changing.
To reverse the support that is shown on eight and make it supportive as opposed to not supportive.
No.
Yeah, that was my amendment. That's the amendment I made.
I thought the amended motion was to allow people to change their vote, not to change.
No, it wasn't. My motion was to change the vote to support, and I had a second.
No, no, the amended, the amended motion was to allow
Point of order.
Change there.
Do we need to re?
Supporting, supporting or not supporting number eight is what we're going to vote on.
Um, most, um, parliamentary inquiry to the parliamentarian. My motion was a motion to support, and I had a second on it. Um, so that was what
And you're talking about number eight?
Yes, my motion, my amended motion to amend what Hope did to focus on number eight was to support number eight, and that was what my motion was, and I had a second. So we need to take a vote on that first.
We have to vote on
Can we do a roll call, please?
Yes, let's have a roll call vote on number eight. Do you support or not support? The motion is to support Liz's, to support number eight.
Are we supporting number eight and?
No.
We're just doing number eight. Are we voting, are we just voting on the amendment? Got it. So it's separate from the
You're making eight green. The amendment, the amendment that was made was to make eight green.
And change it to support instead of non-support.
How are you going to vote on whether you saw?
Green is the consensus.
Right, I'm sorry.
So just to be clear, the motion, the amended motion is a motion to support number eight.
Okay.
Roll call.
You do not support number eight, vote no. If you support number eight, vote yes.
So the motion you're voting on is to support resolution number eight?
Yes.
As worded by Oyster River without any modifications on the floor.
Yeah. Okay.
Full stop.
Sorry. Okay, so not the muddy muddy things a little more. So I, I want to make sure I was clear. So the original, the original motion on the floor was from Hope to take that block from eight to fifteen and go with what is represented from what people originally contributed to feedback.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we had an amendment.
So we're voting on the amendment right now.
The amendment is to Hope's motion or it's its own?
No, it's, it's to Hope's motion, but it's its own motion separately because it's an amend, it's an amendment. So we're voting on it separately. And then depending on how that goes, I may have another motion. So um, so can we just move forward with the roll call here?
I guess my question is motion.
So that it
So that we have the option to reverse position on eight.
Is to change eight to support. That's the amended motion.
Okay.
But does that to change the support and still vote on a bulk?
Or is it just? Well, we've already gone over this.
I'm not asking you, Liz.
Please be quiet.
I'm asking our attorney, who is here.
Once you vote on the motion to amend on number eight, you'd go back to your motion, original motion to then vote on the rest of the nine through fifteen.
Yes, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Okay, rolls call.
Thank you.
To support number eight, the resolution as written, Liz Barrett.
Yes.
Pip Clues.
Yes.
Lisa Rapidport.
Yes.
Ann Walker.
Yes.
Margot Peabody.
Yes.
Nancy Clayver.
No.
Hope Van Epps.
No.
Brian French.
No.
Carrie Nolte absent. Motion passes with, well, it's five to three with an absence.
Parliamentary inquiry here, folks. Hate to do this, but we never had a motion to make this require a supermajority vote to pass. I did it this way for the sake of work. I did it this way for the sake of organizing the discussion, so I just want to make that clear to folks.
So what you're saying is we don't need a super majority.
Well, we never had an agreement that we did. I highlighted it that way because I thought it would simplify the conversation for people to visually see where we had broad agreement. But now Zach has a question.
I, I would say my, if it's okay for me to speak.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Well, I just want to make sure, uh, the, um, I would say despite the fact that this does not help my cause in. Moving this particular item. That I think the, I think the kind of, I don't know, the conceptual. Idea of the board needing a super majority to express a, um, opinion on. Legislation. This is not legislation. This is asking a lobbying group to take particular positions on behalf of, of school boards. It, it seems like that, that should be an alignment. If we're going to make an external. Uh, statement about what we believe in terms of policy, procedure, legislation. I would say, I would advise that it'd be smart to keep the, the standard the same. And if a super majority of legislation, keep it that for this resolution.
I agree with you, Zach. I'm just putting out there that we never had that. Discussion as a board.
Agreed.
You probably want to address that when you talk about your rules next time.
Yep.
It is in the.
It's already in our.
Yeah.
Yep.
We can.
And it has to be a super majority.
For the legislative decisions, we just didn't do it for this.
Okay, so we don't have a super majority on this.
I was putting out separate from this to say that we should have a super majority. I think that that's the right way to handle this.
Okay, does someone, you first, you're first on that motion? Do we have a second?
Well, we already voted, we can't, that'd be ex post facto.
I know, but we're proceeding with the rest of it.
Parliamentary inquiry, though, to the parliamentarian. I mean, would it then, wouldn't it be, we've already voted on it. To move forward, wouldn't it essentially be ex post facto now?
To change to support, but you have a five-three vote.
Yeah.
So the question on the floor is really a parliamentary question, but you're going to have to vote on whether you need. A super majority to actually pass that vote or not. So that's the motion on the floor is for you to decide if you need a super majority.
And it's the ex post facto though?
As if it were a legislative decision. No, I think it's just a point of clarification because of this process.
Right.
Is not clearly a legislative process, but it's closely aligned to one, so. It's up to the board to decide whether they want it to be a super majority or not. And then you'll know whether the, your amendment passed or didn't pass.
So I'm just trying to get clarity around the fact that, um, as Brian mentioned, we've already spent. Time discussing what the process was going to be, and so you're now saying there's a. There's, well, there's a motion on the floor which no one's actually put on the floor, but I'm just trying to understand.
You're saying in the process too, just like.
Follow the process that we originally agreed upon on, as a board.
So I was saying it was consensus that we were going to have a super majority. We never voted.
No, I didn't say I'm a super majority, but to Brian's point, we did have my understanding and the same way we did it. In last year's process and when we brought these forward, we did not discuss a process change, but we had. If I'm wrong, I don't want to speak for you, but I recall that if there wasn't consensus, we would abstain. From the vote at the meeting, right? If there was not consensus amongst the board. Of full agreement.
I am not disagreeing with what you're saying. I just want to be crystal clear and transparent so that everybody is feeling like however the votes are being adjudicated. That we're on the same page.
So I'm.
And I apologize because I took this over from Perry kind of at the last minute. I wasn't personally presenting this, so.
Can I make a motion?
There's a motion.
First of all.
I'm just trying to understand, we made an agreement to enter a process and we followed that process and now it seems.
Nobody clarified in that agreement what the number of votes would be required to carry the position.
Oh, secondly, I second Lisa's motion. It's how we handled the process last year, so no one clarified that the process was changing.
Okay, let's hear from Brian. Brian, what do you have to say?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I hear what you're saying in terms of the legislative one was crystal clear. Majority, super majority, but we did last year use that same process for these resolutions, so. That's what's confusing to me. Um, maybe it wasn't crystal clear or we didn't, you know.
Your expectation, Brian, just so I'm understanding you, that anything where we have a simple majority or a super majority would be the consensus.
S- super majority would be the consensus. Anything below that would have been abstained.
So I think.
That's how we did it last year.
I just wasn't sure if we needed a vote just to have that be crystal clear on the record for everybody.
Do we all understand that? Is it, is it something that everyone understands that we're going to have a super majority for these resolutions?
Or can we be clear that we, we're going to abstain or not take a position if we don't have a super majority? Okay.
So on number eight, we will abstain. Because we don't have six votes. Okay, let's move on to the block of nine to fifteen. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
I hope seconded by that.
Oh, okay, we already have a motion. Okay, do we have any discussion on nine to fifteen?
No.
Roll call, go.
Roll call, got it. Liz Barrett.
Yes.
Pip Clues.
Yes.
Lisa Rappaport.
Yes.
Ann Walker.
Yes.
Margot Peabody.
Yes.
Nancy Claiborne.
Yes.
Hope Van Epps. Brian French.
Yes.
Carrie's absence, pass.
Okay, number sixteen. Do we leave separately because they're all in yellow or can we do?
Yeah.
Really, you suggest?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to abstain.
Motion.
Motion to abstain from vote on number sixteen.
Sixteen.
Motion to abstain from voting on number sixteen.
So moved.
And we have a second?
Brian, a second.
Yep.
Okay. All right, do we have any discussion on number sixteen?
Actually, I'm.
Uh, who, Margot?
As the blue ribbon sustain. Which you'll hear about from me later. This is one of those similar, I don't know, maybe I'm saying similar. This is a chance again. For the Portsmouth School District to define those values we hold dear, and I do believe that. Talk about our rising graduates. They are the buying power, so if we are educating them on sustainable practices and we are executing on that, then I think. We will have a more sustainable future, so I think this was one of those great. Chances to reward schools who are teaching sustainability and are promoting those values and. Who better to do that with than our students? We're going to go out into the world. And I hope you've educated that I'm making better choices, so that was why I was in support of it.
I like to withdraw, I like to withdraw.
Discussion, raise your hand, please.
I'd like to withdraw my motion. Um, parliamentary inquiry. Can I withdraw my motion though?
Pip speak first.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate your perspective and I share it and I'm, I'm interested to hear from anyone who did. Chose not to support this for, about your reasoning.
Would anybody like to respond to that?
Zach and then Zach.
So I'm, I'm not someone who would oppose it, uh, and I would just echo, I'm curious, I think. What I find interesting in the recommendation from the, uh, NHSBA Board of Directors is. I feel like the rationale in this, this is like, it's not. A proposal that relates to school governance or directly rights education. I feel like you could say, you could take that and try to extrapolate that to any of them. I feel like this was a. I look at this as, this was a, this was a negotiated settlement between people who couldn't agree on the board of directors. Uh, and now I'd be wrong, but that's what it reads to me. Um, and so I echo some of the comments that, uh, Margot made.
I would be willing to change my vote to bring a consensus on that one.
To support rather than not.
I like to withdraw my motion, Nancy.
Well, you can't withdraw your motion. It does the. Withdraw the motion. Does the.
Uh, question to the parliamentarian.
I know, the question is, does the seconder agree to withdraw the motion? Who was the seconder?
So can I, uh, can I do a motion to support the, uh, number sixteen?
We have to do that. People could have just voted no.
But how, but how are we running?
What's the new motion?
Motion to support number sixteen.
Do we have a second? Okay, shall we vote on the motion?
Yes.
Okay, do you want a roll call?
Yes.
Okay, if you support the motion, vote yes. If you don't support the motion, vote no.
Liz Barrett.
Yes.
Pip Clues.
Yes.
Lisa Rappaport.
Yes.
Ann Walker.
Yes.
Margot Peabody.
Yes.
Nancy Claiborne.
Yes.
Hope Van Epps.
Yeah.
Brian French.
Yes.
Carrie Nolte's absent, pass.
There you go.
Okay, let's move on to seventeen.
Thank you, Margot. Yes, thank you, Margot.
Nice, just lightening us. Put a motion out to take seventeen and eighteen and. A and C in the bylaws and just abstain on those.
Wait, we do have.
Say that again.
Say that again.
So.
Yes, I would like to take the four other remaining items that are in yellow without consensus. And have a motion to abstain from those at the delegate assembly and take no position. Thank you.
Yep.
Can we get a roll call vote on that?
Well, no, can we have a discussion, Nancy, please?
I'd like to move the question to a vote.
One moment, please. The record person needs a moment to take notes and stay up.
Are you okay?
Yes, please.
Yeah, hold on, it's, so it's, we're taking seventeen, eighteen, A and C.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you, that's all I needed.
Nancy, can we have a discussion, please?
Uh, request to move the question, which takes precedence and you need to wait.
Okay, we need.
Parliamentary inquiry.
I'm sorry, the motion.
Parliamentary inquiry.
She, she just said it.
But I have, I have a parliamentary inquiry that's separate. Within this document, there is a conses- consensus on number seventeen. That everybody supports number seventeen besides Ann.
They don't.
There's support, but there's also support with alternative language. So I would do a motion to amend so that we could deal with number seventeen.
You can't amend now because she's moved the question and you have to vote.
Parliamentary inquiry.
Okay, yes.
Does the move, does the move to the question require a second?
No.
It doesn't, okay. I misunderstood that.
Okay, shall we vote? Do you want a roll call?
Do a roll call. Liz Barrett.
No.
We are voting.
Voting on the yellows.
Our delegate to abstain at the delegate. Seventeen, eighteen, A and C.
That we want to say, yes, if we wanted to.
So abstaining on seventeen, eighteen, A and C. Liz Barrett?
No.
Pip Clues.
No.
Lisa Rappaport.
Yes.
Ann Walker.
Yes.
Margot Peabody.
Yes.
Nancy Claiborne.
Yes.
Hope Van Epps.
Yes.
Brian French.
Yes.
Carrie absent passes, abstain.
Okay, are we on number nineteen?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. How about nineteen and B on the bylaw changes? Could we do those two together?
Yes.
Okay, let's do, do we have a motion to vote on number nineteen?
Do they need to be voted on there by super majority? I thought we already covered that.
Oh.
If it's by super majority, we're going by the majority.
Is that correct?
I thought that's what we agreed on earlier. Yes.
That you're not going to vote again.
So number nineteen and B in the bylaw changes, we will support.
What about all the other green ones? I think, I think, I think, I think we were voting on the standard by which we make a decision. But we hadn't proposed yet in consideration of nineteen, so I think you have to consider nineteen, second nineteen.
What is this document? That's Robert Rules of Order. The document you gave us for Robert's Rules of Order. To call a question to end debate immediately, it has to have a second. So Pip was accurate. The document you gave us said that. So that was an inaccurate move. I'm concerned that we're not talking about Medicaid and school lunches. When that was a priority for us and we just sloppily just moved past it, even though we have a majority that supports it. Even with alternative language, so I'm a little bit concerned with what we're doing right now.
Well, I apologize if I got that wrong, but generally the parliamentary inquiries and the motions. I thought that the motion to move the question similarly would have no second. Um, but if I'm wrong, I guess you can redo your motion and see if there's a second.
But we don't have a majority of super majority with that, even with. Because some of those votes, as Lisa said, are to support and some are support with alternative language.
I agree, but that generally means that most of us, all but one of us supports in one way or another. So it's, I mean, I, I wish that we would have the opportunity to discuss that because it does seem like we're generally in favor of it.
Okay.
All right, so what we'll do is. What we, what we're talking about is sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and A and B.
We need to withdraw that vote.
Okay, do we have a, can we withdraw that vote? And should we vote on the yellow one separately? Number sixteen start?
We already did sixteen.
The motion on the table, sorry to overshape.
No.
Madam Chair, the motion, the original motion on the table was to. Uh, vote to abstain at the delegate assembly on seventeen, eighteen, A and C. A discussion started, then it was a move the question, which we didn't get a second on, so technically we go back to the discussion on. Seventeen, eighteen, A and C before we vote.
Okay.
Am I correct on that? Is that correct sequence? You can't with those motions, can you?
The vote was to call the question, correct? And. It doesn't indicate what I'm looking at. Of course, these are very, you know, summaries.
Well, it's what you provided to us, right?
Called the question, it closes debate, forces a vote, it's not debatable and requires two thirds. I don't see where it requires a second.
It needs a second.
Okay, well, the document that we were sent, that was the shortened version of Robert, Robert's Rules. Does say to end the debate immediately, the question is called, say, I call the question, I call the question and needs a second. The vote is held immediately, no further discussion is allowed. And a two thirds vote is required for passage.
Is it possible?
I'm just also concerned parliamentary inquiry, parliamentary inquiry. We also did this off the record. We did a quorum and we voted off the record and we did not put this in the public and have a discussion about this in the public. These conversa, you know, there could have been side conversations to come to decisions before a meeting, which is. How do you know, Nancy?
Well, you have the agenda, the agenda is.
What I'm saying is, is we all came to, we, we came to. We, we saw everybody's vote. I'm just concerned with how this is going down.
We had a motion to move the question. We did not get a second. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second. Okay.
So now vote again.
Do you want to vote again? We vote again. Okay, we have a second. If you support the motion, not to support sixteen, seventeen.
No. No, abstain on seventeen, eighteen, A and C.
When Lisa goes to the convention, she will abstain on seventeen, eighteen, A and C, correct?
Can I amend the motion, please, then?
No. No.
I cannot.
To vote on, we have a motion to vote, so we're going to vote.
But we're rolling in new resolutions and bylaws changes, and those are very different things.
Well, that was the original motion that we agreed upon, so we have to, we have to move the question. So when Lisa.
So no votes are voting on.
She, me, and so wherever it is, well, abstained from seventeen, eighteen, A and B.
No, we have to take a vote.
A and C.
A and C.
Okay, we will vote on that. If you want Lisa to abstain, vote yes. If you want her not to abstain, vote no. Roll call, please.
Liz Barrett?
No.
Pip Clues.
No.
Lisa Rappaport.
Stain.
It's your motion, don't you have to withdraw it if you're going to abstain from it? Parliamentary inquiry. If this is her motion, doesn't she need to, if it's her motion, how is she abstaining from it? Like.
Her, her motion was.
She can abstain from her own motion?
Her motion was to move the question. Now you're taking a vote on the underlying motion.
And this is her motion though, so shouldn't she withdraw it if she's gonna abstain from her own motion?
There is no requirement to do that under Robert's rules, so the next person to vote is Anne.
Anne. Walker.
Lisa to abstain, vote yes. To not abstain, vote no.
Yeah. Thanks Anne.
Margot Peabody?
No.
Nancy Claiberg?
Yes.
Pope Van Epps?
Abstain.
Alright, we can have all these.
Brian French?
Yes.
Carrie's absent. Three noes, three yeses.
Fails to pass.
Fails to pass.
So.
Which leaves you.
Open the discussion on.
Discussion.
More discussion on the original motion.
And the original motion is.
No, we just voted on the original motion which was to abstain, so we need to, so, yeah. So I have a motion.
So how does she go to the convention that you vote?
I don't know, so.
Another motion.
So motion, can I make a motion please?
Can't right now, we're still trying to figure this out.
I'll figure it out for you Nancy and it's a make a motion to accept seventeen.
We have, we have.
That's how you.
Call members of the board out of order. If you could please restore order and respect. I would appreciate it. There have been some things stated here that are abhorrent. We are a board and we need to trust each other that we did our homework and we did it honorably and I do not appreciate that on public record. The statement is made that there were back conversations for the.
This is the back conversation, Margot.
I am.
Liz, be quiet.
Margot, you have the floor.
We are trying to have an educated conversation about matters of importance. Everybody is here representing themselves honorably. If we could speak in turn, I think we'd be able to move the agenda forward. There's a lot of interruptions that are making it difficult to follow the conversation. So I'm requesting that we return to order and reset.
So the last motion was, the last motion that failed to pass was.
To abstain on number seventeen, eighteen, letter A and letter C.
So that's done.
Failed to pass.
Failed to pass, so that means you are not. See, it's in a double negative, so that's the confusion trying to sort out. If you're not abstaining, are you supporting those motions?
Since that didn't.
Resolutions.
I believe we would have to take them one at a time.
Okay.
And just have a roll call vote on I think number seventeen is tricky because we have some people saying they support the alternative language and some people who did not. So we could certainly consider a motion to support with alternative language.
Motion to support with alternative language.
But I'd like to do it cleanly one at a time now and quickly just so that I'm clear on what I'm doing when I represent everybody.
Motion to support with alternative language, number seventeen.
Okay, I believe Lisa just made the motion. Lisa, can you repeat the motion please?
So my motion would be to put to a vote just seventeen to support with alternative language.
Second.
We have a second, Liz. Do we have discussion?
Yes.
Liz.
Um, I know that some are saying support and not going after the alternative language. I guess I would like to know um, what, why support without the alternative language if there's anybody that's willing to sort of change to go with the alternative language there. I think the alternative language basically clears up what the proposed resolution is.
Pip.
I am willing to change my vote to support with alternative language.
Any other discussion? Okay, so on number seventeen, right now we have five votes to support with alternative language. Lisa just said she was gonna, was it you that just said that? I'm sorry, Pip said she was gonna change her vote, but I guess we need to vote. So let's vote on number seventeen.
And just to be clear.
Vote yes, that means you vote to support it with alternative language. If you vote no, you're not supporting it.
And just to be clear.
Let's have a roll call.
About what we're voting on though?
I just said what we're.
No, but that, what the resolution is, just so that everybody that's.
Resolutions are what is listed here on the paper.
Okay, so everybody has seventeen, they know.
Resolutions that are with the alternate language.
Alright, yes.
Um, I'm just wondering if we could try to get ma- maybe I, I mean, I'm not sure if I heard you right, but I'm wondering if we could try to get to a super majority within our initial votes. So that it's easier to vote hunt one way or the other because we have three options for what to vote, how to vote, so.
We have one motion right now.
What do you mean, because there were three suggestions?
I'm sorry, so.
There are three choices for every item, is what you're saying.
Yes.
So the motion is.
So if I change mine, then there are one, two, three, four, five, six of us who support with alternative language.
Right.
But that still doesn't get us to our super majority.
Right.
But we're taking.
I'm, I'm willing to change my vote, so now we'll have seven.
Okay.
So I would as well.
And, and would.
Okay.
So why now we're just voting on.
To officially vote, we need to officially vote. Roll call, please.
Supporting number seventeen with alternative language, Liz Barrett?
Yes.
Pip Clues?
Yes.
Lisa Rappaport?
Yes.
Anne Walker?
Yes.
Margot Peabody?
Yes.
Nancy Claiberg?
Yes.
Pope Van Epps?
Yes.
Brian French?
Yes.
Carrie Nolte absent, pass.
Okay, thank you everyone. Warren number eighteen. You have six votes to support.
Motion to not support Hampshire School Board Association Board of Directors.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, do we have another motion?
Motion to support.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have any discussion? This is number eighteen.
I think, I think we're gonna have to.
I didn't recognize you.
Can I be recognized, Chair?
Yeah.
Um, I, I think we're gonna fall back on, and this might be a question to the parliamentarian, we're gonna fall back on, um, um some abstaining from this one, um, at the end of the day, if we don't get a su- super majority, right? So if we're voting to support it, we don't get a super majority, it's gonna be abstained as a default, even though we voted not to abstain. So.
Right now the motion on the floor is to support it. Okay, so we have a roll call vote or do we have any?
Yes, I guess I would, I would say that I, and I.
We asked for a roll call was asked, do we have a second for the roll caller? Okay, Margot?
Alright, let's vote.
Liz Barrett?
No.
Pip Clues?
Yes.
Lisa Rappaport?
Yes.
Anne Walker?
Yes.
Margot Peabody?
Yes.
Nancy Claiberg?
Yes.
Pope Van Epps? Brian French?
Yes.
Carrie Nolte absent passes.
Okay, thank you everyone. We're on number nineteen, the Universal School Lunch Program. It looks like we have seven plus votes in support of it. I guess we're voting on these green ones too, correct? Do we have a motion to approve number nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, uh, do we need to vote or can we just do, uh, raise your hand? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Okay, now we're on bylaws in, in the New Hampshire School Board Association bylaws, item B. Uh, do we want, uh, uh, office, uh, members to serve more than, to serve at least two terms?
I know. A, we missed number, letter A, I'm sorry Chair.
Didn't we do A?
It didn't pass Nancy.
That's right. Okay, let's do A, modification of member fees. We have four votes to report it. Can we have a motion to, let's just leave a motion to support it. If you don't want to support it, vote no. Do we have a motion to support it? We have a second.
Second.
Okay, I just have to look at this for a minute. Can somebody explain what it is?
It's a increasing of fees, but there was no information given about that those fees would be.
Okay. Essentially, yeah, I don't know exactly what the dollar amounts to, but they're changing the formula so that it would be based on the size of your district budget. So presumably our dues might go up, but I have no idea by a dollar or how much.
Information, um, the process or the amount.
Which was, so, uh, okay, so people, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Liz.
I was, I, I would support with alternative language to get that clarification, but I don't think we're gonna get that a clar- clarification there then, so I would not, I would vote not to support, I would change my vote on here to not support.
Okay.
Lisa? I mean personally, I might recommend just abstaining on this one because I don't think we have enough information to make an educated decision. But we have another motion on the floor, so I think we can take that vote first and then.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to amend my emotion because I voted to abstain originally.
Well, we don't have to change the motion, just vote no. Correct? You don't have to change the motion. The motion was support it, so if you don't support it, vote no.
Great.
Correct? Okay, all those that are voting no, I don't support it, raise your hand. Okay, and now we are on number. Okay, I'm sorry. Offices would serve two terms. I believe now it's only one term, correct? Um, do we have a motion to support that?
Motion to support.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, do you have any discussion about it? Okay, all those in favor, can we just raise our hands? Okay, they probably can't find volunteers, I bet. Rules of order established. We have five votes to support. Do we have a motion to support this? Do we have a motion?
Motion to not support.
Okay, do we have a second to not support? Can somebody just tell me what that is?
So there's rules of order, but they didn't, they didn't create the rules at all, so they were.
So.
Again, there's no information.
Yes, Lisa.
Who is running this poll?
You mean right now? We're on the last item, so why are you asking that now? Alright, let's, let's move on, okay? Do we have, do we have any? The motion is that we do not support C.
I don't know if you had a second.
Do we have a second? Liz made the motion, do we have a second? Okay, do, the motion doesn't carry, do we have a motion to support? Item C.
I'd like to motion to abstain from voting at the delegate assembly.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to abstain and we have a second. Any discussion?
I don't, I.
Okay. Yes.
I just don't think we have enough information and they haven't created new rules to implement, uh, to establish, so.
Okay, so all those that are in favor of abstaining from this, uh, uh, convention, raise your hand.
Okay. Okay, are we done?
Yes. Yes, we are finished, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you everyone, that was quite a process.
Thank you Susan for being here.
Consideration and approval of policy, second reading, we'll turn it over to Margot and Zach. You want to go first, Zach?
I want to catch my breath. Um, no, give me just a second, I just gotta pull up the memo.
I know, I can't find it either.
I'm just gonna get to it. Um, so. And, and Margot and I have talked about, um, this is IK, IKL. Um, and we've kinda, uh, discussed last board meeting, I put it in the memo, we talked about the fact that there are a couple of points that came up around uh, some concerns and there, there was a desire to have, uh, some additional administrative, uh, weigh in. I believe, based on what I gave you in the memo, that the administrative weigh-in was, was, I thought reflective of what was in the room actually. Um, the two, the two key points, which is the, they, I will say, there was some discussion amongst the board on my number one, um, which talked about the, the administrative recommendation was to take the minimum consequence in the case of, this is in the case of academic dishonesty. Um, the current, the language from the, uh, model policy was shall be a zero relative to specific assignment, test or quiz in a conference with the student and the student's parent or guardian. So we had this, we had some language at the board level, you, I think you guys went in some cases, some of you were talking about eliminating that clause, that altogether or going to May. Uh, the administrators weighed in with liking the ability to have that as a, as a, as a flag, say this is a possibility. But then also having the flexibility to then make decisions on a case by case basis, um, around what they, what they would, um what they could do. Uh, and then the second part was, we had, uh, some conversation uh, within the board around, and I really had asked, uh, the administrators for the most part about number one. Organically, number two, which you had also, uh, some of you had discussed, uh, as well, came up, uh, amongst, without my prompting came on, uh, up, up amongst administrators and they talked about self plagiarism and if a kid can use an assignment from one class and another class, why shouldn't they just use that assignment? Uh, and that's, you know, it's a, um so, uh, so anyways, I, I felt that those two things which I thought were the core concerns, that there was a discussion about going back to policy committee basically were echoed and then I reached out to Margot to have a conversation about, do we think it's appropriate? Uh, even though we would be not having a full policy meeting on it to come back to say, yes, we think we're in agreement and we decided that that would make sense, so I created this memo and then pushed it your way.
Okay. Margot, do you wanna?
Approve IKL, second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Pip, and then Liz.
Um, can you elaborate on the self plagiarism, um uh, section, I, did I hear you right to, to understand that they're, that they're in agreement that it's okay? What?
They're, they're in agreement to strike it.
But is that because we will accept self plagiarism or will, will accept?
So, so.
That it's okay?
So the discussion amongst administrators was that if a, a student has a piece of work that can demonstrate the learning based on something else a different teacher is asking them to do, then why wouldn't you allow them to use that work or in some form? Uh, and, uh, and so that, and if there was repetitive if we're giving repetitive assignments, then you know, maybe we need to do some additional calibrating or we gotta look at some pedagogical stuff, so.
Oh, I had, I had one more.
Okay.
Very minor, but, um, I'm not sure why we're in number five, why we are changing the word art is because it seems like the.
Line five, do you mean?
No, I, I'm, I meant, sorry, line forty-two. Um, because that makes it grammatically incorrect. So, do we maybe want to say the source is cited or otherwise, I'm not sure what that correction?
I think it's supposed to be source.
Are there sources?
Sources, I think sources are actually made sense. Yeah, I'm not sure what happened there. I was gonna mention that in the policy meeting, I know we're not supposed to do grammatical stuff here, but uh, since we're voting on it.
You're the master.
Thank you.
Punctuation.
Okay, I think Hope had comment and then Liz.
Well, no, you said me after Pip.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I guess at the last meeting, we had a motion to eliminate that sentence and I think it passed and then it was gonna go back to committee and so I understand what you're saying, Zach. I, I don't know the procedurally how we go there, but I guess my only thing about that sentence as it stands right now is I would make a motion to amend to get rid of the word minimum, because I think it should be the consequence may be a zero relative blah blah blah. Because minimum is almost signaling, signaling a shall, like that, that, you know, that may be the minimum, you know, you sort of, you're, you're sticking a hard line there. Um, so I would make a motion to amend to get rid of the word minimum.
Do we have a second to that amendment? So we have any discussion? Okay, let's vote on the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more, uh, comment is that the, just the numbering needs to be fixed so that we're, if we're getting rid of six, then it needs to be six, seven, eight.
What, what, you mean line sixty-five?
Line forty-two, or yeah, line forty-four needs to be six and line forty-nine needs to be seven and line forty-three needs to be.
Assumed in our pride.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Hope, you had your hand up.
Yeah, so I'm just, um, I, I appreciate and understand why the self plagiarism piece and I'm in agreement with, um, faculty and administrators on that, um and I would like to understand how that is going to procedurally play out, um especially, uh, the high school and around, um, how that's gonna be communicated out in classroom contracts and expectations because, um procedurally, this may be, this may be our policy, but procedurally it is not playing out, it does not play out that way at the high school in all classes right now. So I'd like to understand how that gap is going to be amended.
So the, um, we would, I mean, we have to communicate out to staff, we've talked about using CyberHoot as the way in which we would this is something we want to do new generally, is when we have a policy change. CyberHoot, which would be, it's a, automatically generates the people a, um uh, what we use as a video-based approach within corresponding questions to just show that one, they got a summary. And their goal would be to have, um, so first, this is a knowledge piece, so their goal would be you have a two to three minute video that explains, here's the change in, in policy. Um, and then people have to answer the questions to, um, to demonstrate that they understand what the change in policy is. Procedurally, it's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna take us time. We're in the middle of school year, we're gonna have to pull this apart, we're gonna have to have conversations with people. Um, what that transition looks like, we're gonna have to muddle through. I don't have like a, here's the, here's the day, you know, um we're just gonna have, we're gonna have those conversations at the administrative council level and then, first of all, we're gonna have to work with staffs in order to, um, work through that.
For that to trickle down to students as well.
Correct.
Um, and then secondly, I'm just curious, while a student may have the right to use work um, and not be punished for that as passed, do teachers also have the right still to set the expectation in their class that in their class, the preference is that work would be um newly created, newly designated work?
Um, I don't, I I I I don't, that's a good question. I think this, the the spirit of the conversation we had was that this is not something we want to ban at the board level. Uh, and and I don't think that was, oh yeah, but teachers can do what they want to do at their own class level. So I think that the 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 belief was that anything procedurally that would come after that would be reflective of the spirit of striking this from the policy, but we did not, um we did, I don't know, right, I mean, I might.
What I'm asking, Zach, is I don't, I don't want to see, I appreciate again, because teachers use the same material all the time, right? And sometimes it's not updated for quite some time. But I also want to give teachers the ability in their classroom to set an expectation that, you know, a project, and I don't want to send the message that to to students or to teachers that we're just gonna carry over, you know, work from one class to the other. So I I want to make sure that we're also leaving the space for a teacher to give space to set in their own rules and context of their contract that, um you know, in my class, I am looking for new and creative ideas to come up.
And I think the conversation kind of started leaning toward just instructional methods and what students are being asked to do to begin with, so that there aren't opportunities for you to do this in one class and carry it over to another class, so that the expectations are set that what's being asked for learning is unique in every unique class. And if you produce something that matches that, it should be different work.
Okay.
So that I think was the way that the conversation went.
So there's not a punishment for
No.
using the same concept or something, but there's still space for new creativity and design within the class.
That's what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, yeah.
And where that's not happening, I I heard you say that there's challenge to staff to reevaluate, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Hope. Okay, we have amended, uh, Danielle, I'm sorry, Danielle.
Sorry, as the teacher in the room, I I don't want to let this moment pass. We are pushing so often for cross-curriculum learning, right? We want this learning to be meaningful in so many different places and as an English teacher, I don't want you to write me an essay for the essay sake. I want you to write me an essay about this amazing thing you're learning about in science or in history or in, um, and so so often my assignments, I almost really recommend that they're not so so siloed. Um, and so I think the more we can, because it's, the kids know what I'm looking for. It's not the content, it's the delivery and it's the creativity of of language about a another topic, but eh, but I I do understand that other side. But then it comes down to if they are able to hand in the exact same assignment, I can't imagine it happens all that much, because it means you're in a class where the learning itself is being repeated exactly, and then they're not in the right class. Um, so so I'm, yeah, I just, I do want to just promote the fact that there are really great opportunities where kids can use the same things often, because it's for different reasons and the focus is different. Yeah.
Thank you, Danielle. Okay, anything else? All right, we have an amended motion that takes out the word minimum in the um Zach's recommendation, the minimum consequence. So all those that want to take the word minimum out, vote yes, those that don't vote no. Can we do a roll call? Can we do a uh? If you want to keep the word minimum in, raise your hand.
No, it's it's.
What, the motion was to take out the word minimum?
Yeah.
Okay, you want to take out the word minimum, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, I want to keep the word minimum in, so I'm the only one voting against it. Okay, the original mo, the word minimum comes out. The original motion is to approve the um policy as we have it right here with that word minimum out. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, next we have the wellness, the wellness. Margo, do you want to talk about that?
So, um this policy is before you, because we are required every three years to um review this policy and that's to go along with our audit of our school nutrition program. So the policy committee, um, that has to be done right now, has to be done by September, because the audit essentially started, so.
Done last year.
Yeah, so what I'm saying to you is the policy committee is aware that we need to take a longer look at this um in particular, but in terms of speaking very honestly about what needs to be in here to meet the terms of the audit, and they they can make suggestions to it, but all the requirements that are in there to meet the terms of the audit are there. So, um.
Motion to approve? JLCF?
Can we have a second?
Second.
Ryan's second? All, any discussion?
One very minor question. Is there another policy that looks at vending machines?
Yep, y'all see that.
Coming right up.
Y'all see it next.
Fabulous. Oh, is there another, I mean, uh, well, it depends on the nature of your question.
Oh, yeah.
If you're, if you're getting to, we we will.
I'm prepared to go down that rabbit hole at this time. I just would like to be able to.
Okay, so Claire, yeah.
Hopefully, we didn't jump the gun. No way to be honest with that.
Yeah, no, I think we did. I think we did now that I'm hearing her response.
Okay, that motion passed.
We didn't vote on it.
We vote.
No.
All those in favor?
Hi.
We're tired.
You're about to.
Hope you. All right, motion passes. I knew it was gonna pass.
Thank you, everyone.
Go ahead, Margo.
Okay, so in keeping with that, when the policy committee brought this up to update it for the audit, we noted that our old um policy is titled school nutrition, but the policy is really about vending machines. It's the recommendation of the policy committee to eliminate this non-required policy EFE. That is why it's on there for elimination.
Motion to eliminate EFE.
Okay. Discussion? Yes.
Your question now.
So, I guess my question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, see your hand up. All these, then we'll do Pip.
I'm sorry. Well, uh, let me just say that uh as uh at the policy committee, we did discuss that, um, as Margo alluded that um, that that we would want to have further conversation about a general wellness policy. Um, and so Margo and I have agreed to do sort of a a overall look at all the policies that address wellness and and as a committee, we're gonna tackle that over the next couple of months, so. Um, so just know that as you think about eliminating this one.
I am.
Is that your question?
I think mostly, I guess my main thought, just to throw it on the record for two seconds, is I don't love the vending machines that have all the junk food and I don't think it promotes learning or health or nutrition. And we're not like walking the walk with that. But no problem with getting rid of this and addressing it in some other way.
Thank you, Lisa. Well noted.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of eliminating school nutrition? Any opposed?
The former school nutrition policy. That's like, see the quote, you know, C code online, school board votes to eliminate school.
Okay, the last one.
So to follow, since we just um approved the second reading of IKL as um our new, more robust, more um clearly outlined academic integrity and honesty policy, that then means that um we no longer have a need for our former JICB cheating plagiarism. And you'll also notice, you know, it's only those of us that are in policy that are nerdy about this, but the coding IKL means that that policy applies to all. When it's, and when it's in J, it's really just for students. And so not only did our IKL um, over supersede JICB, but it it holds everyone in the district accountable to standards of integrity, so. Um, I move to, um, the 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 policy committee recommends removing our former cheating plagiarism policy, JICB.
Motion to eliminate JICB.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in, oh, discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Margo and Pip and Liz. Who else is on the policy committee? Zach? Thank you, all. Okay, we are on to committee updates. I think Anne has an update. Don't you have an update? The library committee?
No, there's nothing new, but.
Oh, nothing that pertains to the school department from the library, you would have trusted, okay.
We had a meeting.
I thought you were gonna say something. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Um, anybody else? Uh, Pip and then Liz.
I think um Anne told me this last time, so, but I'll share it um from the library, um, which is that there is going to be a candidate's forum for new school board can, or for new school board members, um.
Oh, I mentioned that at the last meeting.
Did you announce that?
I did.
Okay, I knew you said it to me, but I wasn't sure you said it to everyone.
No, I don't think you did, because I don't recall writing it down.
Yeah, what's the date? October third at seven o'clock here in the chambers.
Yes, and Anne has been working on organizing that whole event and she asked me to help out. Although I can't go on the third, I can go to the city council.
Third has been the school board that they city, they police and fire, and then the the uh twelfth.
The following week is city council, okay. Okay, so Anne, thank you. You've worked on that for many years and we appreciate you putting that together. Okay, we have, we're at the point of the agenda where.
No, I have a committee update, Nancy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I'm on the SWAG committee and um, so the governor vetoed the bill that would have added in lead testing to um the um, start of school document. Um, and I think we chose as a board to sort of hold off to see what would, how it would play out in the state house. Uh, and so that's how it played out. The governor vetoed it. So now we have an opportunity to add, you know, to to be like other school districts that have adopted this within their school district, to have lead testing for kindergarteners. Um, and so, um, and and I I would suggest that this go to the policy committee um, based on the information that was provided at the SWAG meeting, that between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty-one, there were forty children without a mandatory program identified in Portsmouth that had um uh elevated lev, lead levels. Um, they have been presenting information at farmers markets and at those um information booths that at the farmer's market, there's a lot of personal stories about lead and people not knowing or not understanding and whatnot, so, um. So, I guess the hope, or my suggestion from having been to this committee would would be, you know, I don't know if it'd be appropriate to make a motion or if we could just move it to the policy committee. I don't know what the procedural process would be here. I think we talked about it being in policy, but it's never sort of shown up, so I'm not exactly sure where the lead testing issue stood, but I think that it's something that we need to take seriously, um and adopt, so.
Well, I'd suggest we move it to the policy committee for consideration.
I think we have to take a vote, but yes.
Yes, you do. I have a question about that. So we had them come and present to the board, when was that, Hope? It was last year?
Yeah, it was, it was almost a year ago, I think.
We have new information at this point, or is it still?
So the new information is that the governor vetoed.
I know, I know that, but I mean, like in terms of statistics, in terms of what the exposure is in the district.
There are hot maps and I do believe they had not been released during that meeting. Um, I don't know, Liz, do you know if those maps are available now?
I think they may be online, but I think that the general consensus is, yeah, so, and.
Okay, let's have, let's make a motion.
I would just also just note that um, we do have a question on, I mean, that was one of the forums we handed out. The question is already being asked around um, you know, lead exposure or um but to Liz's point, so that's on our school forums, but it's not currently being followed up on, um, and data, it's, I believe, goes to the state, but um, to Liz's.
I believe it's not on our school forums.
On the forum that they brought to us.
That was a suggested, but that we adopt that forum, and I don't think it's what it's.
Not a suggested adoption. It was a form that we acquired from the district, so I
I don't.
Wrong now.
Yeah.
That was a year ago, but I, because I I know I was a part of that presentation and that they asked specifically to provide you guys with that form, because that was already a step that was supposed to be being done.
That was vetoed, though. So the governor vetoed that going forward.
It's not a conversation right now. Let's have a motion that we ask the policy committee to look into the lead poisoning issue. Oh, did you have any hand up?
I did, um. I guess I'm curious what sort of information the policy committee would be using to do that. I understand the intention in the community to track this and address it, but I don't understand the public health approach of tracking it at age five, when you need to treat it at eighteen, like eighteen months and two years old is when it's medically supposed to be screened. So I understand that we're trying to catch people who didn't get caught when they were younger. But I guess I'm curious to know more about like what the city's approach to this is.
So can I just address that?
Liz was up first and then Hope.
Can I finish my sentence, please? All I'm saying, like, I'm not opposed to it, but I'd like to know more about what the citywide approach to this is going to be before we set school policy, because I think if we do, it needs to be in lockstep with whatever the public health approach is gonna be from the city side.
Good point. Thank you, Lisa. I'm sorry, I apologize, but it's not letting you.
We're getting sleepy.
Liz and then Hope.
So my response to that would be if this goes to policy committee, then we could have Kim McNamara and we could have the city um, and, you know, a representative um, and that uh spoke to SWAG about this, um, you know, come to the policy committee and have that conversation within the policy committee and then move forward. I I guess, you know, if Zach wants to speak to it, my concern is that I I think at the end of the day, it's just one extra check. You know, it's one extra thing that could be easily added to a form that's already sort of being tested within pediatrics. Um, and so it would just be a matter of just adding a little extra per, you know, extra step, and it would give the school more information to, is my understanding, based on the presentation.
All right, let Hope and then Zach.
So, that request has been on the table since the last meeting I put the request in, and I've never heard back from anyone. So, it would be Kim, because she has all the local data and she has state data, and it would be Gil who came and spoke with us, because she also has state data. She can't speak from a legislative standpoint, because legally she's not allowed to do that, but um there, they are keeping abreast of where everything is legally and Kim can also speak to where things are um, from a state legislative purpose. So, that request has been put into the policy committee. I don't know where it stands, but there have been on standby, just waiting to be invited to that meeting. So I just want that to be on the record that if a meeting occurs around lead, it is still at the request of a board member to have those two people be present so that proper information can be given from the proper sources within our state.
Thank you, Hope.
You're welcome.
I just wonder, procedurally, it just makes sense to bring it right back to the board and have the board have the conversation.
So you don't think it should go to the policy committee?
I don't know what we're, I don't know what policy committee is gonna do that's any, that adds value beyond what is ultimately gonna be a board dialogue.
Well, what do we need?
Liz.
Question. Um, what do we need, though, to, in, within policy committee, to create a policy to add this to the form that is being required? Like, so basically, they gave us a sample form and that form was proposed to by the legislature and passed by the legislature, but the governor vetoed it. So that 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 form is not gonna be in existence going forward for the, for our kindergartners when they come in. So, what what essentially is being looked, you know, what I'm proposing that we do or consider and and vote on is to add that to the form. So I don't know if I just, you know, withdraw my motion and make a motion to add that lead piece to the, to the form and bada boom bada bing, we're done, or if we should go to the policy committee and have a real conversation with policy, with Kim McNamara, with Gil, about what the school could do more regarding lead, you know, not just within um that form, if there's a bigger conversation.
Yep, and then Margo.
Um, I, I, uh, what I was uh thinking about in terms of what um you said, Zach, I think that it sounds like we've, we have, I know we have already had a discussion and a presentation on this to the board. Um, and as Hope is pointing out, we have not taken any action on it yet. So I think that the policy committee actually is a place where it makes sense, because we can bring in the the um different people from the experts on this issue um and get up-to-date information in a smaller setting where we can take the time to hear what they have to say and and then we can make a report or a recommendation back to the board.
So, uh, can I just?
Yes.
Speak. Oh. So, um, in that meeting, I also gave an example of the Claremont School's policy, and so the outcome from the discussion that I recall was that the board wanted it to go back to the policy committee. I'm not um trumping the suggestion that Zach is making. I'm just saying that people did not want to have an open dialogue about it um that evening. Maybe that was just because it's a long presentation and how we handle presentations, and now that's being shifted, so if, you know, we want to do that as a board, but the outcome of that original meeting was, hey, this really needs to go to the policy committee if we're gonna be looking at having a policy that would, again, step up with other school board or s, uh, school districts like Claremont that has already passed a policy around.
Okay.
Lead.
I don't believe there's a motion on the floor.
There is a motion, the motion to move it to policy. I mean, a motion, I don't know.
It was not seconded.
But can I answer, um?
No, no.
Briefly about.
I want to move on, Liz, we're moving on. Um, is, like, there is, we need a motion to to talk about lead paint poisoning to the policy committee.
So I would put forth a motion to invite. So I would put forth a motion to invite Gil and um.
Kim.
Kim, thank you, slate to the policy and then allow the policy committee meeting. Allow the policy committee to decide if this is something that they need to come back with a recommendation to the board or take up for further discussion.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, we have a second. Do we have any more discussion?
Briefly, I just wanted to say to Hope that we did take it up in policy and because this was in the legislature and it was going to the governor, we were gonna see what. The governor was gonna do and ultimately the governor, governor vetoed it. So it may, may still be living in policy right now. Um based on that meeting, I'm just not sure procedurally and I just want to make sure that we take it seriously. We put it in policy and we start moving forward with that.
You, Liz.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Liz.
Um, I don't need to make my comment. Okay, all those in favor of having this go to policy with the speakers that Hope recommended, everyone raise your hand if you're in favor. Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passes. Oh, you're opposed.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think it's right. But I, I think it's a good, a good thing to do.
If I, if I could speak, I just, I know the policies really well and I g- I guess the reason why policy batted around and said. Well, the legislature and exit, there's no need for us to have a policy. It it's a, it's, it's not. It doesn't encompass just school-aged children. Eh it come, and so our policies only reach school-aged children. And so that was what the policy committee batted around, that we're gonna spend a lot of time drafting a policy. That doesn't actually get at the source of the problem and that, that's the bigger question for Kim McNamara is, how can we. Communicate with our public on what they need to be doing and the dangers, but the, the, the policy wouldn't actually move the needle at all. Um but we did look at the Claremont thing, so it'll go back to, the motion passed, so it'll go back to policy.
So I.
I would just comment that I, I think that's one of the reasons the conversation needs to ha- be had with the appropriate people in the room. Because people keep saying the question needs to go back to Kim and the question needs to go back to the city, but there's been no dialogue really that's occurred. So I don't know that there's nothing we can do in policy. Um maybe we're just not thinking. Broadly about it because we're not really talking to the right people. But I mean, we also do encumbers preschoolers with, in our district. Um so. And we have partnerships with other preschools. So I don't know the answer and maybe it does fall to the city, but I think it is worth the conversation to be had. And if there's questions that school board members have, which is clearly stated here and that evening, that have been unanswered. I think it's worth bringing those questions and answers forward.
Okay.
I have a committee.
You, oh, you have a committee update. Okay.
Are we still on that? Danielle, is there? Can I just add one more comment to this? And I I I I know that we're talking about it being somewhat too late for the kids who may be coming in as kindergarteners. And I don't mean to sacrifice the firstborn because I am one, but um it does get in the information into the parents' hands for kid two, kid three, kid four. If people are still having that many.
And they do.
Okay.
Margot.
Um, yes, committee update. I'm sorry. Um, the Blue Ribbon Sustainability Committee, eh if you've been following any of the actions online. You know that the city of Portsmouth hired a consultant for our climate action plan and we're well on way to progressing in that. One of the things that they've launched, which I think is actually really apropos to our families, they have a new app called Bright Action. There is gonna be a mobile app coming, but Bright Action is basically, our goal is to have two hundred and fifty homes enrolled. It's a place where you go. The website is www.brightaction.app, Blacks, Backslash, New Hampshire. Backslash Portsmouth. And you sign your home up and it, um it's basically a money-saving app. So you go through all the places that you're spending money and then you can um set goals. Like, eh within five years, I'm gonna try to reduce um my energy uses by this much wattage. And it's sort of a fun competition within the city of how our homes are doing. Kids can get involved or like they are gonna turn the water off during toothbrushing. And so it has these really cool images for the, for the littlest kids to understand. The little bit they can do that goes along a long way. So I would highly recommend using it. Um again, it's brightaction.app. Backslash, New Hampshire, backslash, sorry, backslash, New Hampshire, backslash Portsmouth. But if you go on the um CAP uh website, you'll also find a link for it there. But it's really great to help record what your carbon footprint is and work together as a family to lower it.
Okay, thank you, Margot. Uh, Anne, before we close, I I just, I was noticing Nathan's comment about the budget for last year. And the fact that some things were recovered because of of vacancies. And so I wondered about vacants. I know at the last meeting, I asked if all our teachers will hire and we said yes. I heard tonight that we were down by eight pairs, which is better than the twelve of last year. I wondered about clerical, custodian and maintenance.
I might be able to tell you right now.
I could tell you, I could tell you that I think we have filled maintenance now because we stole a custodian away. Which is great, great that we had a custodian that had recently been hired in the last nine months who really fit. Uh, they uh custodians, I think Kenny might be within one or two of uh of full staff. Clericals. I think we're had, we just had a resignation at the high school in guidance, so that should be advertised right now, but I think that's the only vacancy in clericals.
It's open, yeah.
Yep, and um, arrows and uh.
We have, in 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 any one of those situations, just to be really specific, you know, we also have, at any given time. We have staff that might be going on, out on a longer leave, FMLA leave, connected to something. Um and we have some of those situations that are in flux where we might have some long-term subs coming on and some of those are still, we're still working on. But there are new developments that have happened in the last week. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we're at the item of the agenda where we reopen the public comment. There's obviously no one here. Matt, do we have anyone on Zoom?
We have somebody on Zoom, but their hand's not raised, so.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, Hope, all in favor?
Aye.
Matt, thank you for being here with us.
You, Matt, Toby.
Thank you for being here with us.
You're welcome.